He says, in case I need it, will you? When am I going to know when the flyers out?
It being six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. If everybody would please stop your chatter on this meeting of March 25th, 2024. If you'd please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is a joint meeting with the school committee chaired by the town moderator. John, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I'd like to call this joint meeting of the school committee and the select board to appoint a member to the Neshoba Valley Technical School Committee for the three-year term commencing April 1st, 2024, terminating on March 31st, 2027. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate the slate of Sam Polton and Jody Murphy as candidates.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? There being nominations, the nominations will be closed. I give the candidates an opportunity to present a few, say a few words to both boards. And if Jody Murphy's here?
I think her application said she's not available.
Not available tonight.
Okay. Mr. Polton, it's yours.
I'm Sam Polton, currently serving on the Neshoba School Committee. Did I hear that there is a slate nominated? Is? I apologize.
I nominated both of the applicants and you were one of them.
Oh, I understand. Anyway, it has been an honor and a privilege. First, I want to apologize for the Elmer Fund, still recovering from a stroke. But it's been an honor and a privilege to represent Chelmsford as one of our three full members and alternate on the Shova School Committee for 31 of the past 32 years. But I have to admit that I've enjoyed every single moment of it. But who wouldn't? We have a superb delegation, a great school committee, a superintendent, staff, and student body, second to none. Last year, we, excuse me, I had asked to, last year, we had a student body of 212. This year, 218, an increase of six, and that's been the trend for the past five, six, seven years. We have a great place. Do that, and they will come. And come they do. I am proud at every meeting to see Chelmsford students introduced as Athlete of the Month, Student of the Month, DECA Student. Our honors are legion. We lead the way, not just with our attendance, but with the great things that our students do. Neshoba has truly become Chelmsford's other high school, not better, just different. But the difference is remarkable. Our students not only get a full academic education, they graduate with a certificate in a shop. For the past six years, we have had students at our graduation graduate in Neshoba with a two-year certificate, a degree at Middlesex Community College. Just think of that. A senior in high school graduating, and before she gets her diploma, she has a degree from Middlesex Community College. I won't say very much more, except to compliment everyone involved, Dr. Pidgen, the staff, especially the students, and the select board and the school committee for supporting us every single year lately at town meeting. I look forward to that support at town meeting this year again. That's why it's very painful for me to say that upon reflection, although I put my letter in and would very much like to serve under ordinary circumstances, a number of reasons are preventing me from doing my best. I'm at 90%, which I think is pretty good, but I'd like to be at 100%. And what I hope to do is step aside. I was hoping to see our second candidate tonight, but I did get an opportunity to see her in December. And, Pat, I have to admit, I was kind of pulling for her. And of course, we have a select board member with us on the board. And even though you were a great addition to the board, that was one heck of a speech that she made. And I know that I am leaving the committee in fabulous hands because we have a terrific alternate also that was just appointed, and he's here tonight. Could you wave your hand? What a remarkable young man. And I'm hoping that by taking a break, I'll be able to come back with your full confidence and hopefully all of your votes a year or two from now or whenever there is an opening. Please don't forget about me. So, once again, I just want to say, come out and visit Neshoba. It's well worth the tour. And by the way, we have lunch every day, Monday through Friday, at the Viking Forum. The food is fabulous. Look around, and you can see our handiwork at the Chelmsford Veterans Memorial Park. This desk behind which you sit is the product of the Neshoba Wood Shop. This is just a sample of the outstanding work that they do. So, once again, I want to thank you for 31 terrific years and hope to see you soon, asking for your vote. But right now, I think you can vote for a superb young woman who has ties both to the Chelmsford Public Schools and the Shova Tech. So, best of both worlds. And the last thing I'll say is that the last school committee meeting, I had asked informally the school committee if they thought it might be a good idea if they were invited to come in a more official capacity to observe the meetings and perhaps be called upon if they had any, anything to add. And it was met very favorably by the committee. I believe they're going to be taking it up in April. And as my term ends, March 31st, the last thing I will do is lobby the other members of the school committee, including Ms. Rogers, to vote on that motion I proposed last month to have a Chelmsford School Committee person present to observe, maybe get direct feedback from us. So, once again, I thank you all very much. Sorry for the rocky start. I wasn't quite aware that our other candidate wasn't here. But once again, she's an excellent candidate. Please let her know that I'm ready to help her in any way that I can transition onto the committee so that in April, she'll hit the ground running. And I forgot to mention Paul Cohen. I apologize. You were just reappointed to your position with VOCED again, and Paul has been a tireless advocate for what's best for not only the district but for the town. Very difficult to walk that tightrope, Mr. Manager, and I know I appreciate it. So, once again, thanks to everyone. I hope to see you soon.
Thank you, Sam, for your tenure.
I think I speak for everyone to commend you and express gratitude for your over three decades of service to the community. That having been said, we now only have one candidate. So, if I can just by voice vote, ask if all in favor of Jody Murphy to be the new member of the Neshoba Valley Technical School Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Take care. I hope to see you.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, to get back to the regular part of our agenda now, we'll start with public service announcements.
Okay, the Chelmsford Health Department and the Chelmsford Public Schools and partner with the Greater Partnership with the Greater Lowell Health Alliance is hosting Wellness From Within After School Club. It's open to all McCarthy Middle School students every other Tuesday starting March 26th, and it is facilitated by Sean Dutcher from the school system and Marissa Cameron from the Health Department. If you are interested and have any questions, you can call 978-250-5241 or email mcameron@chelmsfordma.gov or dutchers@chelmsford.k12.ma.us.
So, for our next one, Harrison Mayotte from the Clerk's Office is, will make this announcement.
Good evening, everyone. The annual town election is next Tuesday, April 2nd. The deadline to apply for a mail ballot is tomorrow, March 26th, at 5:00 p.m. There is no in-person early voting for the local election. If you have requested a ballot by mail before March 19th, you should have received your ballot by now. If you have not, please contact our office. All ballots must be received in the town clerk's office by 8:00 p.m. on April 2nd to be counted. It is crucial to mail the voted ballot in the prepaid envelope as soon as it arrives or hand-deliver the ballot in one of three ways: the secure brown drop box in the front of Town Hall, the secure accessible drop box outside of the town clerk's office, or return it directly to the town clerk's office during our office hours. You can track the status of your ballot at chelmsfordma.gov/tracemyballot. Thank you in advance for taking the time to cast your vote in your local election.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, the Chelmsford Health Department is offering a free program called Creative Connections. The program is designed to help parents and guardians bridge the communication gap with your teens with a free art session and creative session. It is geared toward middle school-aged youth and their parents and guardians. There will be two sessions, April 2nd or April 16th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. There is a QRC code you can scan to register, or you can call the Chelmsford Health Department Next up, we have an announcement from the Chelmsford Minuteman Company. They are inviting the general public to join them on their 13th Annual Patriot's Day March from Chelmsford to Concord. The Minutemen Boys and Girl Scouts and fellow citizens will relive the fateful day of April 19th, 1775, that thrust the colonies into the start of the American Revolution, excuse me. The date is the Patriot's Day holiday on Monday, April 15th. They will be stepping off at 4:00 a.m. from the Chelmsford Common, and they will be ending at the Minuteman National Park at the Old North Bridge in Concord at 9:00 a.m. For more information, you can contact Captain John Greenwood at sixthmiddlesex@gmail.com or Reverend Sergeant Jim Curly at jcurly12@comcast.net. And next up, the Chelmsford Health Department is offering free youth mental health first aid training. This is training that teaches adults how to identify, understand, and respond to the signs of mental health and substance use challenges among children and adolescents from ages 12 to 18. The date of the training is April 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It will be held in the Chelmsford Town Hall Fire Training Room at 50 Bilrika Road. And to register or for questions, you can call 978-250-5241 or email tarynangel@chelmsfordma.gov.
Okay, thank you. So, next up is our public input part of the agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board on any topic? And just to note, the 40B on Moro's Avenue, you will be able to make public comment when we get to that on the agenda. So, really, any other, any other topics?
There is a Morris Levy on Zoom who wants to do public comment.
Okay, Morris Levy.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I have a little speech here I wanted to read. How much time do I have, two minutes or three?
Three minutes.
All right, great. Calling for the council to pass a resolution condemning the rise in anti-white hate. We have a right to address our grievances, regardless if you like it or not. It's your job to hear these statements. White people are sick and tired of being attacked, robbed, raped, and murdered. You can learn more at gtvflyers.com. I want to tell the story of Shannon Christian and Christopher Newsom of Knoxville, Tennessee. They were a happy white couple in their early twenties. They were murdered on January 6th, 2007. The horrors started when they were carjacked and taken to a rental house. Both were raped, tortured, and ultimately murdered. Shannon died after hours of sexual torture. She sustained a severe head injury and had bleach poured down her throat and had her body scrubbed to remove DNA evidence. Christopher was sodomized with an object and raped by a minute of one perpetrator. He was then taken to a several railroad tracks where he was forced to walk barefoot to a location where he was ultimately murdered. He was blindfolded in a bandana and gagged with a sock. He wore only a shirt and underwear. After his murder, the kidnappers set Christopher's body on fire, with criminals, where you guess, four black men and a woman. In Northville, Michigan, a group of blacks lured a white family to a home with a Facebook Marketplace ad. They then proceeded to hold a one-year-old baby and the father at gunpoint while they raped the mother. You tell me how this is acceptable in our country for our women to be raped by violent criminals. And just last week, at East Heyselwood High School in Missouri, a white teenage girl was beaten by a black savage to the point of being hospitalized in critical condition. She had her head bashed on the concrete multiple times during the attack. Multiple blacks were shamed acting out in a bloodthirsty rage. These types of attacks are the new normal for us whites, and I'm sick of it. It's great to see that a lot of people are waking up and are being red-pilled. People like to pretend that it's, that it's not taking place, but it is. If you want peace, you have to ask for it. Thank you. Go to gtvflyers.com.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Anybody else on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Next up is committee vacancies.
Okay, here's the open committee vacancies. As of today, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one three-year term available. The Board of Appeals has an associate member for a one-year term. Conservation Commission has one unexpired three-year term. The Commission on Disabilities has three unexpired three-year terms. The Community Action Program Committee has one unexpired three-year term. The Cultural Council has one three-year term. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee has one three-year term. The Historic District Commission has an associate member position open for an unexpired three-year term. The Holiday Decorating Committee has two positions open. The Parade Committee welcomes all applicants for one-year terms. The Public Records Advisory Committee has one opening for an unexpired term. The Roberts Field Advisory Committee has two unexpired three-year terms open. The Recycling Committee has one unexpired three-year term, and the Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term. In addition, the town moderator is seeking a candidate to fill an unexpired term on the Finance Committee, expiring June 30th, 2026. If you are interested in serving on a Town Border Committee, please complete an online application available on the town website. And for more information, you can contact the town manager's office at 978-250-5202 or email tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing for, I guess we'd call it a poll petition, but it's really not for a poll, it's for a conduit on Smith Street. Do we have anybody here from Verizon to speak to this? If you want to come up to the microphone.
Good evening, honorable members of the Select Board of Town of Chelmsford. Name is Alexander Lessing Marrero, M-A-R-R-E-R-O. I'm a resident of 17 Cross Street, Mountboro, Massachusetts. I'm an employer Pike, P-I-K-E, Telecom and Renewables LLC, an authorized contractor for Verizon and New England Incorporated. They have asked me to speak on their behalf about this petition and to go on the record concerning a memorandum received from the Department of Public Works. Verizon is hereby petitioning the Select Board for approval to place one four-inch conduit from existing pole three located on the public way known as Smith Street, running in a northwesternly direction towards the property line of One Smith Street. Verizon is hereby requesting this petition in order to provide new file service to One Smith Street. Verizon would also like to make the Select Board aware that they agree with the conditions set forth in the memorandum dated March 19th, 2024 by the Republic of Public and by the Department of Public Works. I can also answer any questions that the Select Board might have about this petition.
Does any member of the board have any questions about it?
This is to support the choice housing, Paul?
On Smith Street, yes.
Yeah, okay.
George, any questions? Okay. This being a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions or concerns, comments about this, this request for a conduit? Okay, do we have anybody on Zoom, Paul, that you can tell?
Not for this hearing, no.
Okay. Okay, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the underground conduit petition for One Smith Street for Verizon New England Incorporated.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a change of manager, license request for a change of manager at Bertucci's for their all-alcohol beverage license. Is there anybody here from Bertucci's that would like to speak to this?
Shayna Luna is on the Zoom for this hearing. So Shayna, if you could turn your microphone on, camera if you wish.
Okay, one second, sorry.
Okay, if you just want to tell us about this change of manager, the reason for it?
I was recently promoted to general manager at the Bertucci's in Chelmsford.
Okay, and nothing is going to change as far as operating hours or anything else like that, correct?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Shayna?
I don't think so.
All the boxes are checked.
All the right boxes are checked, yes. So, if we don't have any questions, we can.
I will, this isn't a hearing, right? I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager on the all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for Bertucci's Restaurant LLC, doing business as Bertucci's Brick Oven Restaurant at 14 E Littleton Road.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is a discussion regarding the proposed Chapter 40B affordable housing project called Cobblestone Place, which is off Moro's Avenue. And just for the benefit of everybody here about this, this topic, are you going to step aside, George?
No.
Okay. Okay. Select Board Member Dixon is going to recuse himself from being a member of the Select Board and will sit in the audience. We will ask for a presentation from the, from the applicant, and after that, I will read the responses we have gotten from the department heads. We will at that, after that point, have an opportunity for the public to make comments. This is not a public hearing, however, so it's not going to be a question and answer type thing. You can make your comments, and they, and comments will be included in the letter that sent to Mass Housing for this, for this project. So, Melissa, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrelan Robbins, here tonight on behalf of Cobblestone Five LLC for a project known as Cobblestone Place off of Moro's Avenue in Chelmsford. Also with me tonight is Katie Unright from Howard Stein Hudson, is one of the project engineers, Casey Ferrera, the other project engineer from Howard Stein Hudson, as well as Larry Gagnon, who is the applicant. Firstly, I want to thank the board for inviting us to present. Not all municipalities do this, so we appreciate the time that the board takes to listen to our preliminary presentation, and we can answer any questions the board may have at this preliminary level. I know you have town council here tonight, and I won't bore you with all the process, but the board may know we're very early in the process. We just applied with Mass Housing on March 13th. What happens after that is that Mass Housing does two things. They send a letter to this board asking for comments, a 30-day comment period, which is often extended, and they also schedule a site visit on-site so the board members can see the site, which I think is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. At the site visit, Mass, a representative from Mass Housing will be there, I believe, be Michael Busby there tomorrow, and they can answer any procedural questions that you may have for Mass Housing. After that 30-day period is over, Mass Housing then generally has all the information that they need, and they can decide then if they're going to issue the project eligibility letter. It's not until that time that we receive a project eligibility letter, if we do, that we can actually apply to a comprehensive permit to the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals. And that's really when we have a full design for a project and have stormwater and go through some of the regular process that the zoning board is used to seeing for project review. So, as to the details of the project, I think we have a site plan up here somewhere visually, the rendering. Sorry, Paul, putting you on the spot here. So, the project as proposed is for five units. That might be unusual for the board to see. I think the board's probably used to seeing divisible by four. I'll tell you, the general project you see come out of Mass Housing or some of these projects is that 25% of the units are priced at 80% of the area median income, and therefore you have three market rate units and then one affordable unit to offset that unit. We are proposing to do one unit at 20, at 50% of the area median income, which means only 20% of the units have to be affordable. And that's why you see five units instead of four. And that's why you see five units instead of four. So the difference between an 80% AMI unit and a 50% AMI unit is a 50% AMI unit is considered very low income. I think in our Mass Housing application, you can see that the three-bedroom unit that we're proposing will rent for about $1,650. And I think then there's a $75 utility allowance. So you can appreciate that's very affordable for a three-bedroom home in Chelmsford, Massachusetts. If you look at what an 80% AMI unit would be in the town of Chelmsford, that's about $2,500. So the difference is huge. And to offset that, they allow you to have an additional unit. So the base number of units you generally see in a project of this size is five or more. That's why you see five. So we have five units on this plan, as you can see. We have two set up as a duplex-style unit and then one standalone unit. All of these units actually 100% comply with the setback requirements in the town of Chelmsford. We also comply with all of the parking regulations in the town of Chelmsford. We have some preliminary comments from the fire department, which we can easily comply with. But we haven't made any adjustment to the site plan yet because we want this board to comment. We would like to hear some of the neighborhood comments and perhaps meet with the neighborhood. And then obviously, the zoning board would be the last board to make some of the decisions. But we're happy to make some of these adjustments if the board has any comments over and above some of the comments that are already in your packet tonight. I have two engineers with me here tonight, so I won't pretend to be an engineer. I will let one of them go through the project details.
All right, good evening, everyone. Katie Unright with Howard Stein Hudson. Melissa brought you through a little bit about the project. The site itself is just over an acre. It's located on a corner of Moro's Ave. On the south side is actually Route 3 and the sound barrier wall. So the slope goes up from the project site to the sound burial wall along Route 3. To the west are single-family houses on Moro's and also edelon to both the west and the north to the site. And then to the east, there's additional single-family homes. To the north of the homes, on the other side of edelon, is the North Chelmsford Water District. We are in an RA zone per the Town of Chelmsford zoning bylaw, which is a very low-density residential zone. To the north of us is the public zone, where we're adjacent to, and the property of the North Chelmsford Water District. Across Richardson Road is an RM district, so a multifamily district. And then to the south of us, again, is the highway. With that, we've done a conceptual preliminary plan, a preliminary layout for two duplex units and one single unit to create the five. Each of these are two-story structures with three bedrooms each. The road would come in, or essentially the common driveway would come in at the corner of Moro's along our project frontage, which is all the way on the west side of the plan there. The road would come in and then, and then come into where the site itself opens up. And that's where we're proposing the units. Prelimarily, we started to look at things like Melissa said, parking. We have more than two spaces per each unit on the site. There's an existing stockade fence on the north side of the site. And then to the west of the site, whoops, we'll be panning for...
Trying to find the colored one.
The pretty colored one.
That's a separate link, okay, sorry.
There you go.
He's, he's got the whole packet, that's why he's trying to do it.
Yeah, the colored one was a separate link altogether. The project would be served by a septic system, where we currently don't have a sewer connection. We would need to propose a septic system and have that approved through the Board of Health. It would be a Title V system, and it's less than 2,000 gallons per day. We're a little over 1,600 gallons per day. So it would be a regular Title V septic system, gravity-fed to some areas you can see on the preliminary grading drainage and utility plan. The plan is proposed to be designed to meet all of Chelmsford's stormwater management standards and Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection's stormwater management standards. And we're not within any buffer zones to any wetlands for this site. As you can see, there's, what we tried to do was minimize the amount of pavement and provide enough parking. So what we've provided is a 20-foot roadway coming in from Moro's that's adequate for two-way traffic and also adequate for fire protection. I have also spoken with the fire department. There's a letter, I believe, from Gary Ryan in your packet tonight. We've proposed and drawn a turning radius plan that allows the fire truck to back into that turn area and be able to do essentially a three-point turn and turnout. We're going to look at locating that a little bit further down the road for the fire department upon making any revisions, and that shouldn't be an issue. The site itself will be served by town water and electric, and there's no gas in the area of this project, so we wouldn't be connecting to natural gas. As preliminary landscaping, we have started to show some deciduous trees around the outside of the project to help with the screening along where the existing stockade fence is located and some street trees also for shade. And there's patios behind each of the proposed units. Some of the area, we would be looking at putting underground stormwater management. So because the site would have an onsite septic system, we've looked at where we would site an underground infiltration system to take care of stormwater. And we've done some preliminary soil testing out there, so we're confident that we would be able to get a septic system and also the drainage onsite, very sandy material with a fairly deep water table. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Melissa. And we're here if you have any questions.
And I'll be brief, I promise. So the, just wanted to end with letting you know that Mr. Gagnon is a resident of the town of Chelmsford, a longtime resident. He's lived here since 1962. He's not looking to develop this project and sell it. He actually wants to permit this project, build this project, and then manage the project himself. So he's looking to keep this project and will stay with this project throughout its development and through its inception, through renting and leasing and all of that. I also forgot to mention that because this project is a rental project and because we'll fulfill the requirements of 20% of the units at 50% AMI, all of the units will count on your inventory. So even the market rate unit, so all five get to go on the Town of Chelmsford inventory. It's one of the reasons that we went rental. Because if we went homeownership, we'd have to do four times the units in order to get five units to count. So it was part of our reasoning to go towards a rental project, to get all five on the inventory. With that, I will turn over to the board, and we're happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Virginia and Erin, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Are you going to go through letters for...
I was going to do them after the questions, but...
Is the road, do you envision the road being a private road or a public road?
No, the, the road within the development would be a private road and it'd be 100% maintained by the rental association.
Okay. And is, is five units on an acre, is that an allowable density? Or is that going to require special permitting?
This would, this would go through the comprehensive permit rules and regulations. So what happens is we would actually, if we get the project eligibility letter, we can then file for a comprehensive permit through the zoning board of appeals. And then we can ask for waivers from the general density allowed in this area.
So what is the general density allowed in this area?
It's one unit for 60,000, it's one unit for 60,000 square feet. So this exceeds that allowance for density. So you'd have to ask for a density waiver, which is typical in all 40Bs, that you have to ask for a density waiver.
I understand. Just my own personal reaction is five units on an acre seems really high to me. And I know I'm not the one that votes at the end, but I'll just say it.
No, I just wanted to mention too, one of the things that I had forgotten to mention when I was up here before is essentially, the majority of this neighborhood is actually lots that are .3 acres, so around 12,000 to 15,000 square feet. So even though it's a 60,000-square-foot RA residential zone, I don't believe there are any lots in this neighborhood that meet that.
But you still have a much higher density than one unit per .3 acres, is what I'm saying.
Right, so it's about three units per acre instead of five units per acre, the rest of the neighborhood.
Is it 60,000 square feet or is it one acre?
Well, this is, this is a 40B, so that's why they can go higher density.
This lot is not 60,000.
It's 25,675.
That's correct. This is just, this lot is just slightly over an acre, which is under the required amount in the zoning district. So Virginia is correct.
Correct at what?
You're, it's, it's undersized lot in the RA zoning district. It's less than 60,000 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're also looking for other variances also, right? It looks like you have a frontage variance and a width, no.
Yes.
There will be other variances that you're looking for.
There absolutely will. And the process for that is, once you get through the project eligibility portion of the project and you get the letter from Mass Housing, you then have to file for the comprehensive permit through the zoning board of appeals. And that's where you list every single waiver that's needed, that's contrary to the Chelmsford zoning bylaw. And that would be all vetted out once we know what the final site plan that Mass Housing is going to approve.
But there are several.
Yes.
Virginia, do you have anything else?
I do, but do you want to go?
No, go ahead.
So I guess the other thing is, why do you need 14 parking spaces for five units? Most homes have two cars at the most.
I think the required parking spaces, again, I won't play it plain to you.
Is that a requirement of the zoning?
Go ahead.
Yes, so, so we have, I believe, two more than is required. But typically, or the zoning requires two spaces per two-plus-bedroom unit plus one per three.
Okay.
So we could certainly lose those two additional spaces during the zoning board process if the board felt that we had adequate parking.
And I, I noticed in the, in the MHFA application portion of the packet on page nine of 25, the table says that one of the five units is affordable, but the text below it says that zero units are affordable. So you might want to look at that. I don't know if I'm just misreading it. And then my other question is, it appears that you're not making the affordable unit or any of the units ADA accessible or handicapped accessible units?
Well, all of these units are two stories. So they could be accessible, they could be accessible on the first floor, but they wouldn't be fully ADA compliant.
Right, but are you designing any of the first floors to be handicapped accessible?
We could, generally, the affordable unit can be designed as handicap adaptable, which means that certain areas of the house, like the bar and the bathroom, and certain widths of the door are made proper so that if you have an applicant that comes in, that they could be modified as such. And that's something the architect puts in place so that if you get a qualified person to move in, that they can easily move into the unit with very little changes to the unit. And I won't play architect anymore than that.
But who would be responsible for making those changes? The owner of the unit?
It would be the management association that, that has the unit. And it would be only if a qualified applicant would have to come in.
But you don't, you don't, you don't plan ahead to make one of the units handicapped accessible?
No, because you don't know if you're going to have an applicant that is accessible, that needs an accessible unit. This is a family unit, so it'll go through the lottery process just like any other unit in the town of Chelmsford.
Okay. And then I noticed in one of the department comments, there was a comment about clearing all the trees. And you've got evergreens laid out. Is this something where you would be willing to even talk to like the tree committee and our DPW in town to see what might work?
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah, this is preliminary landscaping. We would absolutely talk to DPW and other interested parties, including the abutters, as to what they would be looking for, for landscaping in that area. Yes.
And then there's a lot of concerns that seem to come through in the, in the department letters and I think also from one of our resident communications about the leach field being nearby and the aquifer being there. So can you comment on why you feel that is or isn't an issue?
Sure.
No, certainly. I mean, right within the bylaws, within a Zone 2 aquifer protection district, it's, it's clearly a why, a yes for all Title V systems. So it's allowed in the aquifer protection district. Many communities outside of Chelmsford don't have access to sewer. And significant portions of their communities are in aquifer protection districts. So we need to meet Massachusetts Title V. We also have to go through a process with your local board of health, where we'll go out and get witness soil testing. And we'll go through a review through your board of health that has peer review that will review all of those systems. So to make sure that essentially the aquifer is protected.
Okay. My last question, can I have one more? Is, we did also receive an input that previously, a single-family home was denied on this land. Could, does anybody know why or can you speak to that and why is this different?
Sure, that, we, I actually did that application in 2017, and the board was going to deny it, the zoning board of appeals. So we didn't...
It went to the zone, what, it was a single home that had to go to the zoning board of appeals?
Because of the frontage issue and the undersized lot, yes. So, and the zoning board of appeals was going to deny it. And I can't remember in the cobwebs, because I think it was 2018, if I withdrew or if it was denied, but in any case, it wasn't going to be approved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Erin, do you have anything else?
Paul, did you have anything?
Well, I'm going to, now I'll, now I'll read the, now I'll read the comments. Okay, so we do have comments from several departments, which I will summarize those. First is from the Department of Public Works. They note that a full site plan review was not conducted, so they reserve the right to do that once the formal application is submitted. They note there needs to be provisions for an enclosed dumpster, and that needs to be shown on the plans. And there needs to be perpetual care for the dumpster that will be the responsibility of the property owner. And you need to show all existing and proposed utilities clearly and accurately labeled on the plans. And also, snow storage needs to be identified. And as far as sewer comments, you've mentioned that there does have to be an onsite septic tank or wastewater treatment plant, which needs to be coordinated with the board of health. See, the fire department, they requesting a water flow test near the site. They note that hydrants must maintain a 10-foot clearance from any obstruction or parking spaces and to avoid the snow storage areas. Emergency fire lane, they suggest it be relocated from Unit 5 for easier access for the apparatus. And also note about the snow storage is not shown, and they want to see where that, how that might impede fire access. The drawings have to be equipped with the firearm, fire alarms meeting NFPA 72 and C, and 527 CMR-1 standards. And those have to be permitted through the fire department. And they note that you need to liaise through the, with the fire chief to propose three potential names for the proposed private way. And the application for addresses have to be made to the Town of Chelmsford's 911 Committee, E 911 Committee. The Board of Health note, notes, as has been mentioned, that this is in a high aquifer zone, a zone protection two and state water resource protection Zone 2 wellhead protection area. So you'd require, be required to get from the Board of Health permission to, to, to build there and not have to follow the regulations from the Board of Health. The onsite septic system would have to meet Title V regulations, and a dumpster would have to meet Town of Chelmsford general provisions. Community development notes, again, it's located in Aquifer Protection District and would normally trigger a special permit for lot coverage. They question how a three-bedroom, it says that the, although I thought I read somewhere else in, in your application, but this, it notes that the proposed units do not appear to have basements, garages, or usable attic space. So question how a three-bed, a three-bedroom family unit would accommodate adequate storage. All efforts should be made to preserve trees located within the setbacks. Need to provide proper line screening with adjacent houses with adequate landscaping. Title V system is required in the establishment, which also requires the establishment of escrow account should it be needed for, for maintenance. And also notes that the Great Old Habitat for Humanity has expressed interest in partnering with a local project, 40B project for quite some time. Maybe this is a good opportunity to do that. And we have from North Chelmsford Water District. Again, has, has been noted, there appears to be a leaching field for these homes, that wellfields from which North Chelmsford Water District draws on the water supply. There may be additional regulations that Mass DP and the North Chelmsford Water District will be enforcing. Think that conservation has no issues. So I think that pretty much covers the feedback that we've received from all the department heads. So as I know... So as I noted, I will, and just so those here and on Zoom know, I have received a couple, we have received a couple of the notifications from neighbors about issues, some that have not been brought up, some that have. So I will ask those here that want to comment on this, they can come up to the microphone. But again, note, this is not a public hearing. That'll come when the ZBA gets a hold of this at some time in the future. So it's not going to be a question and answer. But if you want, if you have any other comments that you would like to be included in the letter that will go to Mass Housing, you're welcome to come up and present those comments at this point. And please provide your name, name and address when you come to the microphone.
Michael Winning, I'm at 4 Edgeline Ave. Please pardon my appearance, I was exercising before this meeting. I've lived in there for 19 years, and my concern, of many concerns, is the sewer in the water. Since Mr. Gagnon bought the house and slowly clear cutted the lot, I've been getting more and more water in my basement, to the point where, two years ago, I had to have a new bulkhead stairs and everything put in for $10,000. Window wells, water keeps coming in them. And if you can look at the, I wish there was a picture of the, let's say, the top of your throwaway. You can see the grain of how the water's going to be going down. My house is, over here. This is my house. The water comes down this way. It's higher here. As the more you clear, and all this, it's going to create even more. To my property. And especially with the leaching field being there. The EPA has all kinds of concerns on the website about pathogens in a sewer system that's not right. And, you know, this neighborhood doesn't have any multifamily homes in it, and now we're going to be having five units right there, with a five-house sewer system. It's very concerning to me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Lot seven, they have a well, so, I don't know if it does show it on here, but they have a well. Colin Conne Sylvia.
What is your comment?
The sewer system, for a five-house sewer system right there.
What did you say about a well?
Lot seven, my neighbors, Colin Conne Sylvia, they have a well.
Okay, thank you.
That's gotta be something with that.
Okay.
And just today, there were three people on my property, within probably 50 feet into my property today. My camera picked it up, there's someone was right next to my boat, three people. I couldn't really get a look at who they were on the camera, but, you know, the first day we have a meeting, and there's people just property on my property. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Hooly, 10 Edgeline Ave. I'm an abutter. I want to thank the board for letting us speak tonight.
Now, Mr. Hooly, you did give me that.
Yes, I did. So I won't go through all those questions, but I have a list of comments. So I'd like to list, make note of those. The development of the duplex buildings does not fit into our neighborhood predominantly single-family ranch homes. I feel, as an, and I grew up there, it's always been single-family homes. And I feel that that will be a detriment to, you know, the, what our homes are worth down the road. I think it'll be a detriment. I really do. It'll impact that. And I think I gave you something, there's an appraiser going to be checking into it, and they'll get back to you on it, because I have already contacted them, so they're going to get back to you on that. The concerns, the parking looks extremely limited for a project of this scale. We are concerned overflow parking will take place on Moro's Ave, which is a real concern. We are worried also about extra traffic this will bring to our small neighborhood. As it is now, we're getting a lot of traffic, more traffic than we used to. It's a quiet neighborhood, but things are starting to get impacted with traffic. The neighborhood has always had issues with rusty water due to the old existing pipes. Will this new development create new issues and strains, these pipes, due to the new configuration? I believe they will. If the septic system fails, waste could leak into the public water wellfields than any other development. Will the one-way entrance and exit become a danger in the event of emergency? I believe they will. Will a 40B in our neighborhood bring down the value of our already existing homes? Most certainly. I vehemently oppose this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Cindy Lizinski, 20 Edgeline Avenue, here tonight to speak about this, regarding this 40B proposal. I served, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
A little. I served Chelmsford Fire Department as a firefighter EMT for 20 years. I'm now retired. I'd like to share some of my concerns through that lens. According to the applicant's plans, the road is 20 feet wide, 380 feet long. That is the required width of a fire department access road. According to NFPA, an access road must have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet. Residents, visitors, delivery trucks, service trucks, will also be utilizing that road. Although the applicant has designated parking spots, the reality is, both day and night, vehicles will be parked on that roadway. Any snowbanks will also bring the width down to less than what is acceptable. Any delay to a fire call results in more fire spread. Fire suppression uses lots of water, yields lots of contaminated runoff. This plan, if approved, brings five structures, 12 vehicles, and a dumpster to the site. This proposed project is in an Aquifer Protection Zone Two. The wells for all of North Chelmsford's drinking water are across the street. Thousands depend on this clean water. I'd like to share some examples if an incident were to occur at that site. Typical car fire would yield about 750 gallons of contaminated runoff. Dumpster fire, more than 1,000 gallons. Electric vehicle fire, a little bit more common now unfortunately, greater than 30,000 gallons of contaminated runoff. Why would we knowingly accept this potential risk? At this time, the lot contains an acre of mature trees. It appears that the applicant will eradicate most, if not all of them. Route Three is above that lot, and has long since been a source of contamination concern. This lot is between the highway and our wells. The trees are able to filtrate and sequester some of that contamination before it reaches the wells. If this plan is approved, that natural filtration system will be gone. 20 years ago, the Mass DEP created a SWAP report for the North Chelmsford Water District. Then, as now, our water system ranks high for susceptibility to potential contamination. Mass DEP's recommendation 20 years ago, prevent new development in Zone Two. So here we are, 20 years later, still trying to protect our aquifer. If this 40B application is allowed to go forward, we will have lost the opportunity to protect the aquifer. We will have lost the acre of woods that is a natural filtration system. And we will have lost the respect from our children, who will ask us why we couldn't have done better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like a copy?
Yes.
I don't know if you need one?
Yeah, if you have copies, sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thanks. Okay, is there anyone else?
Wayne Sullivan, 11 Moro's Avenue. My concern is the entryway to the road itself. The way she's showing, the way it's shown right there, it's actually going to turn into my driveway. If you look at the corner of my house, my driveway comes straight out. I'm worried about backing out of my driveway, looking for incoming traffic. Also, I have some concerns about roof drain issues, runoff from the roofs. There's no original topo grades out there to see what the original topography was of the land, and what's going to go on out there now. And also, would there need to be a sidewalk put in as well? Also, to gain access, there's an, I don't, there's an electrical pole on there too, that I'm not noted.
Could you clarify that comment?
There's an electrical pole down to the front, that, on the, the original, that got sent out on the email. There's an electrical pole, right down here, near the, the tree, I think. I don't know if it's, oh, maybe it is there. Can't see it. All right. I didn't see it on the original one. That's just about it. I was more worried about backing out of my driveway, hitting, running in oncoming traffic coming out.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Is anyone on Zoom?
We have people on the Zoom.
Okay.
So if you could raise your hand, and then we'll recognize you. Mark or Pamela, do you wish to comment? Or Lizelle? They're not raising hands, or should, or turn off the microphone, so they may just be observing.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I would encourage the applicant to meet with the neighbors. You've heard some of their concerns, and we will be working on the letter, the response to the, to your application. And I guess that wraps it up for today. So thank you very much for coming, and good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Sorry, we were trying to find the monuments.
Okay, next on our agenda is a discussion with, if you could, is a discussion with a representative from the planning board regarding the accessory dwelling units that are proposed in the governor's bond bill. So is there someone that's going to represent the planning board to tell us what you guys feel? Or do you just want to hear what we?
I think mostly we might like to hear what you guys have to say.
If you'd come.
Check, there may be some.
Come to the microphone.
Well, the, we had asked for, you know, maybe just the chair to come and tell us, the planning boards.
They haven't had a chance to discuss it as a board.
Oh, okay.
We haven't seen it.
Well, you've seen it, it's come up at the end of your meetings and your liaison reports, but they've never had a formal discussion as a board. That's why they're here individually, I think.
We have not seen the document.
Did you send them the document, Paul?
Yeah, was that what, was that what the meeting noticed? The attachment, no, no, the attachment that went out.
Okay, so, you know, I guess the purpose of this discussion was to see how the planning board felt about this. I mean, you know, at this point, I don't know that we were anticipating any action other than to advocate one way or the other for it. And we were looking for some feedback from the planning board, as far as how the planning board felt about it. I see we have, what, at least three members of the planning board here, right? Do, so, should we wait on this? I guess maybe.
Pat, just if I can.
Sure.
My understanding is that this is going through the next cycle legislatively to the, I think to the Ways and Means, Paul, in a couple of weeks, in like two weeks. So if we want to provide input, I don't know that we have the luxury to keep delaying much further. So maybe we should have a working discussion or something about.
Chair, may we speak as individual members if we?
Sure.
Sure. I'm sorry, I'm not the chair.
That's right. Don't forget. Okay, like I said, we do have three, I see three maybe. Does, do any of you want to tell us how you feel about it? And keep in mind, you know, this, it's, you can't do deliberations, but you can tell us how you feel about it.
I'll speak for myself, Mike Walsh, the planning board. I was under the understanding tonight, that tonight we were going to hear a presentation about this.
No, no, that was not the intent at all.
So that's not the, so I'm going to speak by myself, but I have not seen the document then, for myself. So I think we need more time to look at that. Because I was under the impression, when they asked for the planning board members to come tonight, that there was going to be a joint discussion regarding this, this new plan law.
No, that, yeah, that was not the intent.
Miscommunication.
Madam Chair, the document, the, it's only a couple of paragraphs. Would we be able to have someone just summarize what they say, for context for people who haven't seen the document?
Well, I'm not sure that that's appropriate, if they would then go back to the planning board and then have their discussion. Does Attorney Havity have any?
I'm just saying, can we get two sentences on what the legislation is proposing?
If the board would like, I can do that.
Just to give context, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Basically, the governor's bond bill, which is moving to the legislature right now, and was filed in October, it was sent in the House side to the Committee on Housing first. They released it about a week and a half ago, as is, in its current form. What it provides, under, as well as a number of initiatives, but in terms of the accessory dwelling units provision, it would allow accessory dwelling units to be built by right in single-family zoning districts in all communities. And then, let me explain what an accessory dwelling unit is under the legislation. It's a self-contained housing unit, inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimension and parking requirements, that one maintains a separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling, sufficient to meet the requirements of the State Building Code for safe egress. Two, is not larger in gross area than half the gross area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. And three, is subject to such additional restrictions as may be imposed by a municipality, including but not limited to additional size restrictions and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 64G. Provided, however, that no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of an accessory dwelling unit that is not a short-term rental. And then further goes on to say that the use of land or structures for an accessory dwelling unit under this paragraph shall not require owner occupancy of either the accessory dwelling unit or the principal dwelling, provided further that not more than one additional parking space shall be required for an accessory dwelling unit. And provided further that no additional parking space should be required for an accessory dwelling unit located not more than a half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry station, or bus station. So basically what they're saying. Yeah. It looks like Deirdre has joined us.
Yes.
The planning board should formally open a meeting.
Yeah, we're going to have to.
Okay.
Well, as I said, that kind of wasn't the intent, but go ahead, we have a little time.
Well, you're the vice chair, I believe.
She's the chair on the line.
If she's actually with us, I see her picture.
Can you hear us, Deirdre?
I can. I'm sorry, I have a family emergency. I'm actually pulling into the parking lot at UMass Medical at Worcester. I was listening as I drove here on the Zoom call, and then I realized that you were, I thought it was going to be just a general discussion. I didn't realize you were looking for specific feedback from me. But I will just start to say that we haven't really discussed it as a board, to any great extent. And I thought this was kind of an opportunity for the two boards to discuss the plan. My personal thought is, I, at a minimum, would want to just see if we could advocate to request or require owner occupancy. I feel like that would go a long way, in my mind, towards making it less of a negatively impacting to our community.
So, Deirdre, I think if you're going to have any sort of substantive discussion, because there are four members of the planning board present, that you should formally open a hearing?
Okay.
Open a hearing?
Open a meeting.
A public meeting, yes.
Okay.
The agenda, the agenda item says, discussion with the planning board regarding the Massachusetts housing bill. It doesn't say a planning board representative, just so you know.
It also sounds like Deirdre might actually not be able to stay with us, if she's attending an emergency. So she might have to hop off regardless.
I will have to hop off. I'm going to walk into the ICU shortly.
So then I think it's probably better for you to just hop off and not open a meeting.
Yeah.
And then the members that are here can discuss this without needing it to be a public meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Then I'm just going to go back and listen to the extent I'm able to. On telemedia.
Okay, thank you, Deirdre. Okay, Mike.
Sorry about that.
Well, under the circumstances, I'll give you my opinion on this. My crystal ball tells me, I wouldn't be surprised if several other members think the same way, but I'll just speak for myself. The notion of providing some.
Excuse me, Mike, I think we still need Deirdre to leave before you.
Yeah, turn off your.
I'm trying to, I'm, sorry.
There we go.
There we go.
It's, this proposed legislation kind of pushes the line between what we've traditionally regarded as, you know, the, you know, the granny apartments and things like that, to a point where it would appear to make single-family zoning close to obsolete. And that's my concern, that there just doesn't seem to be any way, given the way that the initial draft of this has been proposed, to avoid putting two buildings on a lot and, and filling them with unrelated people. Two of the aspects of, of in-law apartments that, that we try to, to hold on to. So that's my view of it. I think it's a bit of overreach and I'm not sure where the state's going to go with it. Maybe somebody here's got a better notion than I do of what they're going to ultimately try to do. But I'm personally not, really not for it.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Souza, speaking tonight as an individual member of the planning board. This bill on accessory dwelling units, I think, is very dangerous and it will radically transform our town from a single-family home community to a much denser, heavily populated one. Some of the things that concern me that I've heard from some of the advocates of this bill are that they use it, they use the concept of intergenerational living to try to sell the bill. I don't think any of us are against trying to find a solution for elderly parents or grandparents to live, to find a place to live in the community. But what's concerning is then when you read the language that there is no provision for the, as we've heard, that the occupant of the unit be a relative of the property owner. And then we've also been told by some advocates, don't worry, not every homeowner in Chelmsford will want a renter on their property. So my issue with that is, that may be true in some respects, but as a previous speaker said, I see this as a, as sort of an attack on single-family housing, which makes up the majority of our town. And my concern is if you, if you, that this will incentivize the sale and purchase of single-family homes, if this becomes state law statewide, you're going to see investors offering people money to sell their home. And then when the developer buys the home, it's not going to matter, and the, and the original owner is sold, it's not going to matter who's in the ADU to the, to the professional investor. They are just looking for return on their money. My other, my main concern is with the density that this will cause, is that the buy-right aspect and the fact that allows detached ADUs is also a concern. But my main concern as a, as a resident and a planning board member is that the town does not have the infrastructure to support this kind of dense growth. Our schools are at capacity. Don't take my word for it. Dr. Ling and the school committee can expound on that. Our sewer system is at capacity and our roads, as many, all of us know, are already clogged with traffic, especially during rush hours. And the one thing I can guarantee in all of this is that it's highly unlikely that the state's going to provide Chelmsford with the millions of dollars that we'll need to build new schools, enlarge our sewer system, and redesign our roadways. So I urge the board to contact our state reps, Representative Cataldo, Osiero, and Elliott, and our state Senator Mike Barrett, and let them know that the harm that this is, could cause Chelmsford. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess now it's up to us. As you mentioned, Virginia, there is some timeliness. That we need to act on this. We could, you know, I could draft a letter and send it to our state reps and Senator, highlighting the concerns that we just heard and any others that we have amongst ourselves that we've heard before.
My understanding too, I think when it goes, is it the Ways and Means Committee, they're going to, are they the ones that have the public hearing?
I imagine they'll have a hearing and then it will get released in some form and then there'll be action in the Senate and then probably go to a conference committee. I think with the, the desire to get it done by the end of July. So it will stop moving pretty quick.
Yeah.
And when is the hearing? In two weeks?
They have not scheduled.
They haven't scheduled it yet, but it's.
But they're, they're, they're expecting action soon. There was, even in the formal session today, they advanced legislation similar to this, a separate bill, moved that forward to a third reading. So there's, there's clearly a signal, and if you've seen some of the recent comments from the Speaker of the House, that they're, they're going to move on the housing bill relatively soon and relatively, you know, significantly. The only thing I think I'd point out to the board is we do have Deb Taverna, who's the Chair of the Housing Advisory Committee in the town, this evening. I did copy the Chair of the Planning Board and the Chair of the Housing Advisory Committee of this discussion this evening. So I don't know if you, if Deb wants to be recognized or if you want to hear from her, but I didn't, I didn't want to, at least not be noticed in her attendance.
We have three chairs, you know. Deb, would you like to provide any comments?
Hi, Deb Taverna, Housing Advisory Board. Just some brief comments. We have been discussing this off and on for the last year, seeing what was coming. We do have some concerns about changing neighborhood character. We have also met with the Board of Health and they have a lot of concerns about how do you make this work, which they have emphasized to us. So there are a lot of moving pieces in this and I just think we need to keep pushing forward.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that nobody's mentioned at all is the electricity, it has additional, you know, impact on the grid. I mean, I don't think we have that much power to sustain a lot more growth. But that's only my opinion. I'd like, I'd like somebody to find out, power company or whatever, if we did expand all this stuff. And I don't know if they've done that kind of research. I would hope they have, but.
Yeah, the administration, the governor's administration is working with the utilities in the state because it's not only, aside from this, you've got the whole issue of, of challenges posed by electric vehicles, electrification of, you know, mass transit vehicles, as well as the demands that are coming forward with electricity from AI and other needs in the future, the data centers and so forth. So that's a big issue if you're going forward.
Especially with the new Angie codes, Paul.
The other issue that is a concern was water. And if you may have seen over the weekend or the end of last week, the House Speaker noted the potential expansion of the NWRA water resources to both the South Shore and the North Shore, including would be in the town of Chelmsford. As they, the opinion seems to be that they believe that the MWRA has capacity that could serve those expanded areas in terms of water supply. Now, again, those are going to take quite some number of years and quite a lot of expense, but they're, that's, again, came from the Speaker of the House in terms of how he's trying to overcome some of the concerns on these proposals to add housing to the state's inventory. But yes, no question, electricity is a, is a, is a concern by, you know, and, and we're, and we're seeing it even in a micro level. I've been working with one of the vendors on 129, trying to get 480 volt service. And they can't get a committed date from National Grid of when they can upgrade, because they need that for their expansion and operations for manufacturing in the 129 corridor. So electricity is a form, form of concern to the vibrancy of economic development and housing development.
Paul, we have a snippet here about from the MMA being opposed. Are they organizing a formal response?
See, I have not, I searched high and low. When this was released back in October, the MMA provided notice out there. And what they, what they noted was that the bill would allow accessory dwelling units up to 900 square feet as of right throughout the state, with the ability for communities to set some reasonable, quote, some reasonable restrictions, unquote. The MMA has opposed this potential preemption of local zoning decision-making and will be raising these concerns as the bill makes its way through the legislative process. That's the extent of it. I was not, the more recent story that came, when there was a hearing held a couple of weeks ago that went all day and into the evening, the MMA provided testimony, but I'm unable to find that testimony on the MMA's website or elsewhere. But I think the MMA's concerns are the idea, and much like the MWRA, yeah, the MBTA zoning issue is the idea of preempting local zoning decision-making. And to my knowledge, that has not changed at this stage. That's the paramount concern is removing local decision-making.
Evan, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think that it's probably time. I just feel like there's a lot of pressure coming from everywhere with the housing stuff. And this is, it sounds like there's a lot of concerns. I think we have concerns on our board. I think the other boards have concerns. The Housing Advisory Board has been talking about it for a year.
And the Board of Health.
So they're ahead of us, you know? But I think it's time for us to kind of create some sort of formal communication to our state reps. Maybe with the collaboration of all of our boards.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking, well, Paul, maybe we could do like how we do for the 40B and reach out to all the departments rather than have a, a multi. You know, I mean, as, as Deb mentioned, the Board of, yeah, the Board of Health, I'm sure the water districts have concerns. Perhaps we could, you know, get a, a list of all, all of their concerns and consolidate them into a, a letter.
Is there, well, I guess the other question would be, are we taking a position or are we just saying, here's our concerns? You know, because there's a difference. There's, there's a, you can say, I'm concerned, and maybe tweak it so it's family members only. Or you could say, we're opposed to this and this is why.
Maybe they'll come up with the answer.
My personal, my personal leaning is on the opposition side. I think we should try to stop it and also point out in there that it's, it's not addressing family. Or it's like, here's, one of the clauses is, this is on the page 37 of 126, on the two-page thing that Paul sent out or attached to the packet. Provided, however, that no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation of rental of an accessory dwelling unit that is not a short-term rental. So now you can put a tiny home on your property or attach to your property, basically, and start creating investment rental units all over town. And that, I mean, this really concerns me. And I, I think that when we have this letter drafted, I'd like to suggest that maybe we copy the MMA. And I know there's people from NIMCOG here. Maybe we copy NIMCOG because I don't, I think that the people who are out there advocating one way or the other ought to have input from the municipalities before they do it or while they're doing it, as they're formulating that, that advocacy. And I, I agree with what MMA is saying about driving it down to local decision-making. I think when you're trying to manage so much from the top, it's going to, it's going to crush, crush us as municipalities. We can't, we can't support it.
MBTA and now this.
Well, it's, it's not just preserving why we all move to the community and the, you know, but, but then from, for all the infrastructure comments that have been pointed out, we can't support it.
Has the, has the, the regional planning agency had discussions or taken a position on the?
They can tell you in a few minutes.
Well, they could tell us now if they want.
I don't know if there's been discussions amongst the planning board and select board members on, on NIMCOG.
Oh, it's, it's been brought up several times.
Would, would you envision this letter being signed off by, well, like more than one board chair and committee chair?
Well, and I guess the question is the timeliness of it. I mean, if we could, if we could wait until our next meeting, which is two weeks from today, we could get all this, this feedback and generate one, one letter, maybe that references, just like the letter to MHP. I mean, all the, you know, the department heads don't all sign it.
Right.
So would the other boards vote in favor or against supporting a letter of opposition for us?
Well, I, I think, I think we would ask them, number one, their concerns, and number two, if they want to take a stand on it. And if so, what that would be. And we could include that. I mean, that's, I don't know.
The problem is, is with the calendar, with, with the town election next week.
Right, I know.
Beginning of the month, I'm not sure the other boards will be meeting.
So like, for example, Paul, is this even on the planning board agenda?
Their next meeting isn't till after your next meeting.
No, their meeting is this week.
No, it's not on your agenda for Wednesday. It's not on the agenda for Wednesday.
I just asked Evan to put it on if we could.
Yeah.
You have to amend it.
Amend it and put it on so we can get some real feedback.
We have not discussed.
And that, that would be great because then you could take that into the consideration before our next meeting.
And then do we want to write a letter or do we want to try and get our reps in here and have a conversation with them, with all the boards?
Well, I think for timeliness, we should, you know, go with the letter first.
The letter first.
You want to document it as part of the formal process?
Can we do the second step afterwards, I think?
Well, we have them coming in, in a couple of months, which probably would be before they would vote on this.
Yeah, so we can add it to the agenda?
Correct, absolutely, yeah.
What's the, what's the period to, to influence the content?
Well.
Like two months from now, that's going to be over.
Right, yeah, most likely, it could be enacted by the House before the end of next month. Then the Senate may take it up in May, then it'll go to a conference committee, but then the conference committee is really bound by what comes out of the House and Senate in terms of, you know, settling the differences between the two. So, you know, as I, again, the, the exact dates haven't been announced, but I think the intent is, is to get this moving, you know, in the House at least, within the next, you know, few weeks. They're going to release the budget there on the.
Is your sense that we have time to, if the planning board can talk about it Wednesday, then we could talk about it at our next meeting?
Your April meeting, yeah.
Okay. Let's, let's do that and I'll, I'll start working on a draft that we.
If you need help, let me know.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to NIMCOG. And they can provide any feedback they may want as to the previous discussion we had.
All right.
Welcome.
Well, I was going to start with hello.
Hello.
And I am Jennifer Rayd. I'm the Executive Director of NIMCOG. I've met many of you already previously and I'm joined by.
Hello, I'm Kelly Lenema, the Deputy Director of NIMCOG.
And, and really, this is, this is a great opportunity for us to really just talk about NIMCOG, what we do and what we've been doing with the town of Chelmsford in the past couple of years, as well as what we're doing right now. So that's the, the purpose of this discussion. But I'm glad to also answer any other questions that you might have about other things that you've been talking about or, or otherwise. But if I might start there first. So for those of you who don't know us, NIMCOG, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, we're the regional planning agency based in Lowell. We serve greater Lowell, which of course includes Billrica, I'm sorry, Chelmsford, Billrica, Drakeett, Dunstable, Pepperell, Tewksbury, Tingsborough, and Westford, as well as Lowell. So we try our best and have done so for 60 years now. We actually were formed in 1963. And for those years, we've been a comprehensive regional planning agency, providing all types of services, including for direct technical assistance to our communities, to advance housing, economic development, transportation, environmental issues, and also GIS and data collection, as well as regional collaboration initiatives, including, we are currently your sealer of weights and measures. So we do that actually for all of our communities, as well as additional communities beyond the region. We have a 15-person staff. We, our goal, of course, is to advance the capacity of our municipalities, as well as to foster that regional collaboration and coordination. We have an 18-member council, which includes representatives, including Pat, of course, Chair Wujsis, as well as, we have Anita Tanini from the planning board, and we also have Douglas Bruce, who is our alternate member. And each, each town actually has two votes on the council from ideally the, to the reps of the select board, as well as the planning board or city council, in the case of Lowell. We meet monthly in a hybrid format, the third Wednesday of every month. Of course, anybody is welcome to attend. And the meeting is, of course, on Zoom, as well as at our office. We also, one of our most significant sources of funds. We also, one of our most significant sources of funds is actually through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, because we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region. And what that means is that we help to program all of the transportation, the federal transportation dollars that come through the region. And it starts usually in the form of studies and analyses of traffic or transportation issues that are identified by our local communities or regionally, or from the state, Mastot. There's two districts actually in our region, District 3 and District 4. Pat is actually the representative to the MPO from the council. And as part of our MPO planning process, we, for example, last year, we adopted our, our long-range transportation plan called Envision 2050. As part of that process, we then advance all different types of projects for highway, transit, and other locally or regionally important or significant projects through the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program. We're actually in the process right now of developing the TIP for the next federal fiscal year, which starts on October 1st. Additionally, we're in the process of developing a unified planning work program, which helps us to identify other opportunities to move forward with projects in the future. So we do studies or analyses. So for example, in a prior year, we actually conducted a study of Ledge Road. There was a presentation provided to this board, in fact, early last year, by two NIMCOG staff. And at that juncture, we identified opportunities for collaboration and continued discussion, monitoring of the traffic situation. These were around conditions related to truck traffic in particular. That type of study might eventually grow to become a TIP project or an additional, you know, something that merits further analysis through some additional studies that could be funded through the Unified Planning Work Program. So we, we basically, we do our best to work with each one of our communities on plans or projects that may also leverage additional funds or resources for your community or for regional projects. So that's just an example of that. Additionally, we recently worked with the town of your town, as well as Billrica, on an issue related to Brick Hill Road and looking for opportunities to collaborate together. And there will be some follow-up for that particular project. Kelly's gonna speak to some of our more recent projects that we've been working on through the DLTA program, including helping the community to be compliant with the MBTA Communities Law. And then additionally, we helped the town with basically maintaining your status as a green community. This is a program that the state provides. It provides you with direct resources, but it also actually provides funding to NIMCOG to provide regional energy planning assistance. And what that entails is that we help each one of our communities to both maintain their compliance through annual reporting, seek opportunities for, say, decarbonization, or studies of municipal buildings to bring down the cost of energy, and look for alternatives to move forward. For example, we worked with Chelmsford, as well as other communities in the past year, on a net zero action plan scope of work. And I think the town has been moving forward with some of those initiatives through, for example, looking at land use planning and other potential actions. And then the last thing I'll mention that is that we also receive, we are a partner to the Economic Development Administration, which essentially means that we can be a catalyst to help leverage additional economic development dollars for both local business growth and development, or to spur other types of revitalization. And so through that program, we are currently looking at a designation as an Economic Development District, which would help us to bring in even more dollars for our region, which we're hoping will move forward. But what we will be doing is launching a five-year, a new five-year plan for a comprehensive economic development strategy. And then also, and Kelly will speak to this, a regional housing strategy. And so I'm gonna stop there and let Kelly talk more about those projects.
Thank you, Jenny. So again, my name is Kelly Lanema. I'm the Deputy Director. I work with Jenny and all of our staff on a number of transportation and economic development, land use and housing issues, and climate resilience. So in the coming year, we are working with the town of Chelmsford specifically on a couple of projects. We are current, we have been working with and we will continue to work with Chelmsford's Planning Board on MBTA Communities Compliance. We are doing that work not only with Chelmsford, but with six other communities in the Northern Middle Sex Region. So this is work that we have done to try to understand the law and help communities apply it and help them go through the planning process with residents in their community to understand what may be best for them in bringing something forward to town meetings so that they comply with state law. In the coming year, we will also be working with Evan Belansky on the, on the Center Village Master Plan update. So this was a master plan that NIMCOG did, I think, back in 2012. And we'll be updating that with new transportation information and then also looking at land use, housing, and a number of other opportunities, including economic development and climate resilience. We're also working with the town on the update to your Open Space and Recreation Plan. And I believe our Housing and Economic Development Planner, Manager, Chris Hayes, met with your Housing Committee last week to talk about your next Housing Production Plan update. So that's another project that we'll be working on. Regionally, we are gonna be updating that five-year economic development planning process. That's called the Five-Year SEDs. So we'll be implementing, we'll be nearing the end of our implementation of our previous Five-Year SEDs, and then starting to plan ahead for what can we do as a region on an economic development perspective to support the region economically in the next five years. We also just kicked off At Home in Greater Lowell, which is a regional housing strategy. So as we've listened to our various communities and we've done all of the housing production plans and pretty much in every single one of our communities for the last maybe decade or so, housing continually emerges as a top issue. And so this is a way of thinking regionally about what are the best approaches and strategies, and maybe what works for Dunstable might not necessarily work for Chelmsford, what works for Chelmsford might not necessarily work for Lowell, but we can think about how those housing opportunities work across the region and start to develop strategies together. And also think about how those strategies intersect with economic development and infrastructure needs so that we can equally plan ahead for those issues. And then finally, regionally, we are working on a regional digital equity plan, which thinks about internet access for all and access to education, equipment, tools that people need in order to basically function in today's society, because the internet and internet access is such a huge part of our lives. And then we are working on the Greater Lowell Vision Zero Plan. So Jenny had mentioned how the SEDs document kind of helps our communities avail themselves to greater funding. The Greater Lowell Vision Zero Plan is also gonna do that, because it will basically set the stage for allowing our individual municipalities to apply for infrastructure funds for safe streets and roads for all. So thinking about those important sidewalk and crosswalk infrastructure improvements that can make, you can be made, and then applying for federal grants in order to help to fund those projects. And then last but not least, we are also working in the Boston-Nashville region, so it's sort of like the mega-region level, on a climate, climate pollution reduction grant. So this is thinking about climate pollution across the broader region and how we can address those things collaboratively with our municipal planning, our regional planning agencies in Boston, all the way up into Southern New Hampshire.
And just on the, the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, which is basically like a, a large-scale climate action plan, that too, similarly, will be an opportunity to then apply for implementation funds to address, you know, the sort of big-picture decarbonization. So, for example, there might be multiple opportunities for housing authorities to work together to apply for a big federal grant in order to decarbonize, to basically bring down the costs not only to the housing authorities, but also to the residents living there and make for, you know, safer, healthier living for everybody. So there are a lot of other opportunities that we're working on. I'm glad to answer questions. We also work very closely with our CEOs through a regular monthly meeting and look for as many opportunities as possible to collaborate. For example, with Paul and his peers, we elevated the idea of pursuing a regional, an opportunity through the Community Compact Program, which is basically a grant program to municipalities, as well as regional entities. And we submitted an application for a Regional Housing Services Office, which we have not heard back on that yet, but, you know, we are trying to look for other opportunities to collaborate and work together to do things that both benefit our local municipalities, as well as things that would serve the entire region. So I think with that, glad to answer any questions, but that was, you know, the main purpose of our, of our visit this evening.
And, and we get all that for, what's our assessment for NIMCOG, like $10,000?
It is, in the next fiscal year, it will be $13,593.76.
So I would say that's quite a bargain.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Jenny or Kelly?
Do you have an example of what your role is in the economic development side?
Sure.
I'm still not understanding that.
Yeah. As, the role is really primarily a convener and facilitator to understand what our communities want to do in terms of growth and economic development. You have an extremely strong person here who's working on economic development for the town, very active, very engaged. Paul is also, your manager, is also very engaged in Middle Sex 3. And we work together collaboratively with both local economic development staff, as well as with Middle Sex 3, and other regional entities like Mass Hire, the Workforce Investment Board, and the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, basically all of the different players across the region, to find opportunities to both pull together in understanding of exactly where, what we're trying to do, how we want to grow as a region, and then find ways to communicate that to both the state and the federal government, to essentially bring in funding, to move forward with whatever, whatever those strategies or actions are that the region would like to pursue. So for example, there might be a number of different local economic development planning processes, like in Chelmsford, I believe, there's one coming up with the Town Center, Center Village Master Plan or Local Action Planning. And doing that kind of local planning work could eventually lead to some economic development funding through the EDA or other state programs. But the key to that is designing a plan, having a strategy, which is that, that SEDs document, but also convening a committee of people, it's really like about 30-plus people who meet pretty quarterly and talk about those issues, talk about how they're work, you know, working on things locally or regionally, depending upon the type of person participating. So our role is really as convener, and we also help to pursue opportunities. And those opportunities could be for additional resources or capacity or funding.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So to get to the previous discussion, I know that you might have some more insight as to where things are going and what the timeline might be for that housing bill, or maybe not.
Actually, I don't have anything more to add than what the answers that were previously provided would have been the answers that I would have provided. It was moved out of the Joint Committee on Housing, as was noted, about a week and a half or two weeks ago. And the next step, I think, is actually the Bonding Committee and then Ways and Means. And I don't, and all I know is that it's in the legislative session, and we all know when the session closes and what the desires probably are in terms of moving that out and onto the governor's desk. And, but that goes through the same legislative process as any bonding bill would. So I don't have any other information, and no hearing dates have been scheduled. And in terms of finding letters or comment letters, I, I'm not certain if they are posted in a publicly available place, but if I can find that information, I will share it with your manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
That is what I know.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Jenny or Kelly?
On the Brick Hill Road, is it something that we can discuss or something?
The Planning Board was making, was in the middle of making a decision on a specific application. And as part of that process, we worked collaboratively with the, your town and Billrica on the potential resolution of an issue that came up during that discussion process. And the resolution ultimately was, and of course, the application, I think, is still possibly under review or in, in, you know, an appeal period, depending upon the timing. So I can't speak specifically to that application, but what was deemed an appropriate resolution was to set aside a certain amount of funding to further study the possibility of a traffic signal ward for that location, which is basically at that intersection. And since it is adjacent to the town of Billrica, we had a pretty, you know, strong dialogue with both managers and engineers and planners.
It's a 3A, it's a.
Yeah, 129 in Brick Hill Road, right by the forum, the intersection right there, which is actually located in Billrica.
Right.
And so the, the desire, I think, is to get a traffic signal there. And what everyone notes is the trucks coming out of UPS, you know, going on to 129 to Route 3, and, or turning left going back to UPS are the concerns, but that area, we know there's the, there's the post office on Brick Hill Road, there's, there's the forum, there's the, there's a mosque. And then obviously, there's also the traffic that goes up and down 129 and jumps it in Billrica. Yeah, so it's, it is a busy intersection. And so the, the first step, as noted, is to do the traffic study and warrant, and then you're gonna need to do the preliminary design so that you can eventually get onto the TIP to, you know, get the funding, because that's gonna be millions of dollars, you know, to do like full traffic signalization there.
I was kinda hoping there was a little bit more development on something, I suppose, something was gonna be developed.
No, this came out of the development at 93 Brick Hill Road, adjacent to the existing UPS, which was only a 60,000-square-foot storage building.
The one that's right across, like, right in the water?
Right across from the driveway, yeah.
Swampy areas right behind it?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I have another question, actually. I'm curious, MWRA, kind of transitioning up this way, comes up periodically. I'm curious if you guys are hearing anything from the other municipalities in the area? Interest, questions?
What I know is probably about the same as what you know about the MWRA's potential expansion and about the level of interest. I would think that all communities might be potentially interested in exploring that, especially given various fiscal constraints to providing municipal water supply and, and addressing the number, the magnitude of issues of, you know, in the future related to water, drinking water quality. So I think the communities are all looking at it as an opportunity and trying to understand what the MWRA will provide in order to make that happen potentially, and also better understand the timing. What I've seen is that the MWRA has released a study about this, and there are specific quadrants and like sort of areas or zones related to the potential for expansion, and they're, they're at a very preliminary phase of exploring that, that expansion. So I think there's a lot more dialogue to come. And I think it's, if Chelmsford is, of course, interested or seeking to explore that further, I'm certain it'll come up in other, you know, council conversations, potentially NIMCOG council meetings, and then also with the CEOs. So I know there's interest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for coming.
You're very welcome.
Hope you enjoyed the meeting that you watched.
Thank you, yes, absolutely.
Thanks for all you do.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
See you Wednesday.
Okay, next up is Christine Clancy. Thank you for, for sitting quietly and patiently back there so long.
Thank you. I have a few updates tonight to provide. I think the first one is the ARPA update. So just go over this update. We, as of the last month, we did allocate an additional project to, from our ARPA funds, and that was the pilot smoke testing project. So in total, we've now allocated 57 projects to the ARPA funds, which is about $9.79 million allocated to those projects. Of that, we have procured 87% of those projects and 66% have been invoiced or spent. Again, in terms of the timeline, the timeline is this December where we want to allocate all the funds, and we have until December 26 to complete the projects. I've updated the spreadsheet that I provide monthly. Again, the colors, the blue and the green are projects that procured, blue complete, the green is procured, but still in, in construction or in completion phase. The yellow are projects that are partially procured. The red are the, the projects that have not been procured to date. So to highlight, I think, just go over, without going over every single project, just to go over some projects. The testing and balancing projects remain to be procured. We are still trying to find the Facilities Project Manager. We have that position still vacant, so that is something that has been delayed. But we are, you know, we do have a goal to procure it this spring still. If we don't hire that, that's something that Matt Schweitzer and I will have to procure. Moving further down, there has been some updates to the Kensington Road Pump Station Project. We are doing some work right now retaining walls and getting the site ready, but the balance of that project will be procured through a capital process. So there shouldn't be any costs beyond what we've shown here in the ARPA. Another projects, moving on just further down to item 47 to 48, 49, these are the watershed projects that we were able to. these are the watershed projects that we were able to um, set aside last fall. So, those projects are underway right now. We just recently did the project kicked off, kickoff. That project is in a data collection um, phase right now. And then, moving down below that, projects fifty through fifty-five, we're right now going through final design document development. Um, with the exception of number fifty-three, the remaining of those projects have been about ninety-five percent complete in terms of the design document um, development. And then, the next month, we'll also be going forward and NOI submission for some of those projects. Um, so, I, for next month, I hope to have um, a really good update with those numbers, you know, fifty through fifty-five. Fifty-six was also recently uh, procured and allocated just this past year. That project's almost complete. I hope to have that completed for next month. And then fifty-seven, that is the latest project that was approved at the last month's Select Board Meeting. That project, uh, we just had to put together a scope and ha, we hope to have that um, this spring procured, and then in terms of the implementation, this, this summer. The best time to do that project is this summer. Are there any, and then, then, so following that, we still have about seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars that's unallocated. So, that's what we really have to target. My guess is that potentially this summer, I mean, I guess it's up to discussion on when we want to, but I have started to create a list of potential projects. Um, some of them, we have them actually already near, near design completed. But, you know, that, that seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, that really is what has to be allocated before the end of this year, and going back through all those projects too, just to make sure some, if there's any funds remaining, that we would also look to update those projects as well.
Okay, any questions for Christine?
Could I ask a quick question? Harmony, I can't remember, Harmony Park, was that, was that on here as a drainage improvements project?
So, that was, I don't know if that was uh, proposed in the original, but that's about a four hundred thousand dollar project to add drainage on Carlisle Street. We don't have any drainage on Carlisle Street, so we, the thing is, so we did originally look to put it on here.
We talked about it.
We did talk about it. The thing is, is that when we go to do the, when, when the Mass DOT goes to do the Westford um, street pro, or the, the Westford Street Bridge Projects, Carlisle Street will be used as a detour. So, it's gonna be tricky to maybe fit drainage in before um, before the completion of those projects. And those projects, I understand, are potentially a two-year duration, so it's something that we would wanna potentially, so it's in our queue, I just don't know if it's, I mean, unless we acted on it immediately, I don't know how we would.
We'd have to do it either immediately or wait three years.
Yeah. Yes. We did recent, I know we did try to do some local adjustments, trying to install a leaching basin, but really, the, 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 the correct fix is to add drainage on the street.
Yeah, it's a mess. I was there like two weeks ago, and the whole parking lot is just water.
Yeah, we would, it would take a few months of design, and then I would have to get an update on where those projects stand for a um, completion. So, it's something we can look at, but it's something that has to be coordinated with that pro, with that, those bridge projects.
So, should that still be on this list, or did we take it off?
It wasn't on this list.
Oh, it wasn't, okay.
It was, I think it was in one of the long lists at the one point, it was on the one point eight million. These were, a lot of these projects were projects that were already in queue, could be potentially uh, quickly, more quickly designed. The Carlisle would be a more involved design process, and I think that was about four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars that, so it was a pretty significant amount.
If you look at the, I know you were talking about the timing of allocating the rest of the funding. So, for the projects not procured, it looks like there's about one point two million at least not procured yet. Probably more than that, because I just looked at the big numbers. And then, do, do you happen to know, like, for the ones that are not complete, that are partially, or the work ongoing, like, what, what's outstanding? Because it, it just seems like there's still a lot of, um, there's still a, a significant amount of red and yellow and even some green, and I don't, it, would it make sense to kinda let that ride for a little bit to make sure that we know what they're actually gonna come in at before we start allocating the balance?
Yes, so I thi, I believe going back to the top of it, uh, like one B, that's a very large item. This is the school HVAC system, so it says fifty-two thousand dollars spent out of uh, five hundred and sixty-nine. So, it's something that I do wanna look at, the, I guess, the monthly burn rate, and that's something that potentially we would adjust, because that does take us to the next three years. And then, a lot of the projects that are green below that are HVAC-related projects. Um, number three is the one project, and I did update it last month. We, we have that uh, differing site condition where we have a significant electrical um, change needed, so that is under design right now. We should have an update by the end of this month, um, on what that, we do have it carried here, but we'll have an update in terms of the design being developed and then pricing for that. Um, but the price is carried in here, it's just to move that project along. Moving, I mean, a lot of the other projects, I think, are number six, number ten, I would say those, there's not, there's not too many more surprises left.
Yeah.
Um, and then the red, the fourteen, the seventeen to twenty, those we do need to procure still. And moving on beyond that, like the, I guess, call them non-DPW projects, twenty-one through um, twenty-eight, and I think that's something we can look at a little clo, more closely to see if there's any um, updates needed there. We haven't been as focused on those projects.
Yeah.
Uh, number thirty-four, we actually are advancing, so number thirty-four is the culvert structural assessments. We are advancing, so that money will be spent, but actually, some of those recommendations fall on a later project listed in the fifties. So, I think to shorten, is where, I guess, we're tracking it monthly, and I think some of the, we know what the outlook, you know, what the potential surprises are, and I think we've covered it. If anything, the prices would hopefully come down. I would, I would think that a lot of movement is happening this spring, and then a timeline potentially would be this summer for allocating. I do have a list of a couple of projects that I could start to make a list just to share as potential considerations, just to show you some projects that we have that are near shovel-ready, if that's something you would wanna see for the next month.
Yeah, let me know, it would be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, good, because, because what's gonna happen is you're probably gonna have to make a decision by July one, because what, what has happened is the federal government current standards, they're saying you have to be obligated by the end of this December, as Christine noted earlier, but currently, their standards don't include uh, force accounts, me, like, employees as a contracted obligation. So, they've asked now for a few months for the federal government to change that standard. So, for example, we've hired some employees through the Health Department to do mental health issues and so forth. If that doesn't change, it, within the next few months, then, then you're gonna have to make a decision saying, you know, you don't wanna be turning money back, leaving it on, you know, leaving it at risk. And hopefully, we'll have some guidance in the next couple of months. Um, usually, the federal government gives you significant advance notice, and they do know that this is an issue for communities across the country, but, so I would think that we may have some clarity, because if that's the case, then we're gonna have to not only look at these projects, we have to look at those labor accounts and saying, okay.
They might, they might say the labor is not.
Yeah, no, that's the current standard, right. So, in other words, what they're saying is, is only a contractual obligation is considered obligated uh, by the end of the calendar year. So, for example, that we have an employee working in the Health Department who's doing mental health crisis intervention, they don't, they, that would not, that would not be allowable, current, under the current standards, beyond December thirty-first of this year, because they don't consider that a contractual obligation. If we have a contract with XYZ firm who's doing that, then that's a contractual obligation. So, in other words, they're not, what, what we call force account labors, i.e. current staff and so forth. And that, that's been hanging around now for a few months unresolved, and again, I think what's gonna happen is if we don't have an answer by July one, us and a number of communities are gonna have to re, reassess, what, what do we do over the next six months? Because it's not just coming here for approval, it's, as you can see, it's also the procurement and execution of, of contracts, so. So, again, stay tuned, but we, we should have some clarity in the next three months. But that could be another thing that we've gotta look at, which is why Christine keeps saying that we, we'd have projects that they're ready to go. Remember, we're, we're, we have latitude um, in terms of how we expend these money, so we, we would basically go just to not leave, to not have to basically leave the money on the table for the federal government to take it back.
Right, I'm sure we can find a good use for all of it.
Right, exactly, yes.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you. So, move on to the sewer capacity.
So, moving on to the sewer capacity, I did wanna provide an update. Um, I know it's been a little bit of time, so we had previously been providing updates uh, on a monthly basis. Um, but just to provide an overview, so what we do, we do, we track our monthly flows. We look um, and look at also rainfall. Uh, here is a chart showing rainfall over the past just over a year, tracking the rainfall amounts that we've tracked using a, a local website. Um, and, and then our flow, and also our flow combined with Tingsborough shown in the, the maroon. Our monthly capacity through Lowell is eighty-seven million gallons. Um, that capacity is, has been exceeded in the past eleven out of fourteen months. And you can see that in this chart. We have had a very rainy season the past twelve months, but you can see correlations. Sorry, just getting a little feedback. You can see correlations between high rainfall or snowmelt and, and higher sewer uses. And just an example is last month in January, if you look at the number, we had a hundred and eleven million gallons. Our capacity, again, is only eighty-seven, so it's really just, it's a astronomical number, really almost unprecedented from previous years. Uh, we did have over ten inches of rain in December, high groundwater. We also had fourteen inches of snow, so I think it's a combination of snowmelt and high, high rain. So, we are still seeing the correlation between increased precipitation or, or groundwater and higher flows in our system. So, slide please. So, you know, and looking at short-term, midterm, long-term mitigation effects, we need to essentially, and we've had meetings with DEP, we need to find uh, how to make our system tighter. Uh, our system isn't that old, so we really shouldn't have in, as much, at least infiltration in the system. And we've done that initial analysis as a short-term mitigation effort to do some infiltration and investigations in about twelve percent of our infrastructure, so just about twenty-two miles. Um, that was completed over the past couple of years. What we found there is that we do have some infiltration. We found about twenty-two thousand gallons of infiltration, primarily at the manholes, very little in the pipes, so that infiltration uh, is, is found at manholes. Uh, we do continue, so right now, that two hundred male, manholes, there, we are moving forward with designing lining of those manholes. Um, that's a project that will likely take place this, I think it'll be at Fall Town Meeting for Construction Appropriation. Uh, that is being designed right now. We also continue efforts uh, monthly, looking at and doing manhole inspections, and if we do find infiltration, that is something that we note, uh, and we, actually, we just found two over the past two weeks. Pretty sign, actually, one being a pretty significant um, amount of infiltration, infiltration in one manhole. So, we actually look to quickly repair some of those more, I guess, the, not the two hundred, that's a separate project, but the ones that we find. So, every time we do find that, we do note that as a correction, and, um, because I'll talk, I will be talking tonight too about our sewer capacity, um, credit transfer policy. And so, we are at a point where we're trying to track anything that we can take out of the system. Uh, we also are doing the sump pump inspection pilot program, so that is a program over the past year. We have reached out to anyone in the community that has a sump pump connected to the sewer. We had a hundred, eight, just over a hundred eighty interests. Um, going through that list, not all a hundred eighty people are, are um, they don't, they're not eligible. Some people had a sump pump that, some people didn't have a sump pump, some people had a grinder pump. Some people had a sump pump that just went out to the backyard. These are some pumps that are connected to the sewer system. We do know that groundwater is very high right now, and, and people call, so I do have some pumps that are connected to the sewer. That is a considerable amount of flow that could be, that actually technically is not allowed to be in the sewer system. As part of this program, we have told people, we'll find that solution um, in, in a way to relo, to relocate um, the sump pumps from their system. Um, that analysis will be pending over the next few months. Right now, they're doing the inspections, and they have to do their, um, they finish their report and their recommendations, but I imagine we'd have an update probably later this spring. Uh, another mitigation effort is smoke testing, so this is something that, this is the recent ARPA allocation project. This is something DEP is requiring us to do, and is, can be, sometimes it can be a very quick way to find inflow or infiltration in the system. People might have downspouts, catch basins, private catch basins, um, or some pumps connected to our sewer system. We can smoke test from the manholes and actually find where those, where um, those sources are through, through smoke testing. Other communities have done it, um, and we are, we're being required to. We've moved this program up from next summer to this summer uh, in order to try to find some of that, that inflow, really inflow in the system. And uh, also, this past January, we did develop a sewer credit policy. We also had a, you know, we had a two-year moratorium policy, so replacing that with a, a new sewer policy, but also how can development continue in town? So, we do have a policy that's available on our DPW website, our Sewer Division website, and it, it basically outlines how people can purchase uh, capacity, really for commercial growth opportunities, and I'll get into that in the next slide. Another item that I haven't, we haven't done, but it's something just considering is, right now, when you, when someone sells a home, people are going in for disconnects for wa, the water utilities. Water utility is not part of DPW, in talking to some other communities. Um, there are some communities where the water is part of DPW, so when their water department goes in, their water department and their sewer department are, are looking to see if there's a, a sump pump system connected or to the sewer. So, that's something that we've potentially, it would have to be a bylaw created, but just for any sale of home, going in to inspect the property uh, before the completion of the sale, is something to consider. Um, potentially, that could be potentially this fall. Moving on to long-term capacity, so these all are short, midterm, really just to be able to handle uh, the current capacity situation that we're dealing with and also allow some growth. But what do we do for long-term? So, long-term is, is there additional capacity that we can seek in Lowell? Lowell's going through a process where they still are significantly, or predominantly combined system. They're going through some sewer separation effort, they're having to remove inflow from the system. We have had conversations with them, just is it something we could buy additional capacity? Um, in talking with them, that is currently not an option, but it's something that just we wanna continue to pursue in, at point, at some point in time, would they remove enough inflow from the system that they could sell capacity to neighboring communities? Just something to, you know, potential, it is a potential, still an opportunity to consider as a long-term. And then, the other opportunity is the connection to an MWRA system. About ten years ago, we did look at maybe doing an onsite or uh, in-town treatment facility to add capacity, and there really isn't a viable solution, or there's an availability of adding an outfall to the Merrimack River. So, really, the only other option for, you know, additional capacity is just what would our, what would it look like to connect to the MWRA system? The two nearest communities are Bedford and Burlington, um, so that is something to, potentially, it could be through ARPA, it could be through another allocate appropriation, is just what, what it costs? And what's the, when, what, what are the, what, is it feasible? Um, looking at it, I mean, it would involve having a pipe go through other towns, um, but it, right now, seems to be the most feasible option compared to some of the other options. So, this, just wanna provide a sewer capacity policy overview. We do have a lot of uh, questions, more for commercial growth. So, right now, so this policy is available on our website, um, came out last January. Right now, the policy does allow people to, if you have a sewer connection, you can increase your capacity by five hundred gallons per day. That really, for residential, allows for people to add a couple bedrooms, a few bedrooms, and for commercial, it could sometimes be, you know, ten seats, depending on uh, how that equates to the Title V calculation. So, it allows for some minimal growth. Um, but something beyond that, you would really have to seek capacity, you have to purchase the capacity. So, to purchase capacity, that capacity is only reserved for commercial growth. So, we do have, you know, for subdivisions or other residential requests, uh, we say that that capacity has been reserved for commercial growth. So, we, right now, we have it priced at thirty-five dollars a gallon, and that really is the fee that we estimate it is to really take some of the infiltration inflow uh, out of the system. And it is required at a two-to-one ratio, so when we say, if you need a thousand gallons, you have to buy two thousand gallons. One thousand gallons goes back to us, back to the system, and then a thousand gallons goes to you. Other communities, um, has, I've heard some, even neighboring communities have a ten-to-one ratio. So, I mean, it is, it is um, typical to have, have at least some ratio. We just went with two-to-one, uh, because we're charging, I guess, we're looking at it, and we don't have much capacity. We're trying to get as much capacity out of the system right now. Um, we also have in the policy, the option for commercial property to sell their existing capacity based on their usage. We have not had anyone approach us. This was something in the development of the policy was discussed, as could this be an opportunity? So, it is in there, but we have not had anyone approach. So it is in there, but we have not had anyone approach us, really asking too much about it. But just, that is still in our policy. When we go through, so we have had, over the past year, we've had over twenty-five people inquire. Some people are just inquiring about it, and, you know, development doesn't happen. Some people, we also have some agreements in place. Of the twenty-two thousand gallons, we have, we're actually essentially near the end of that amount. We've only, what we require is that they have to make payment before certificate of occupancy. So a lot of those projects are still in the development stages. So we have, I guess, letters of intent, or some, you know, intent to, to use that capacity. We've only had one applicant complete their, pay for it, and now they're, they're using that amount. And it's want to highlight too, the capacity is based on a ten-year lookback. So we do look back based, and it's based on your water usage. We do account, you know, if there's been COVID, where we see a significant decline, we do omit that. Or if there's some other, sometimes there's billing errors where there's very, very high amounts, we do look to take that out. But we look at really the mean or median average. So where we are now is we are continuing just to, as requests come in, continuing to allocate, really, we have, we're, as we're taking inflow out of the system, it's going into the bank, and then if people are asking for it, we go through a process of evaluating it. And then, I guess, selling it at that, you know, selling it at that thirty-five dollars a gallon at a two-to-one ratio. The next steps moving forward, continue to track that. And also, we have had in the past year, a lot of questions asked, and I just think we are at a point where we want to update the policy. Nothing significant, but there's some, there's some clarification and tweaks of how we've interpreted, other people have interpreted it. So right now, DPW is working on an update, and I would say in the next month or two, we'd be able to provide that update. I don't know if there's any questions?
So with the twenty-two thousand gallons of banked capacity gone, in the first slide that you showed, that showed that we're consistently over our monthly allocation from Lowell, does that mean we, we basically don't have any capacity right now?
So I would say-
Except for the five hundred gallon?
So the twenty-two thousand that is gone hasn't really been given, it's been promised or intended, but it hasn't actually been put into the system, because these are all developments. The, the, what you see here, this chart, this is purely based on, I think, our increase in flows. So, and, and I think the twenty-two thousand gallons is really a blip. I mean, where we're looking here is tens of thousands, or almost, I think, just in January, almost a million gallon change. So we're, we're, we're tracking every change, but the twenty-two thousand gallons that we've given away hasn't been recognized in the system yet. So I guess we are at capacity, so we do have to be mindful-
So I get questions, what's our capacity left? And I mean, I, I don't know the answer to that, I know you guys are administering the policy, but it seems like our, what we have left is zero, basically.
Based on the current conditions, is zero. But if you go back, look, if we, if we, I didn't go back after a year, we look like we had some, a little bit of capacity, like ten, twelve percent. So it's hard to find out exactly how much is full infiltration, we know it's in the system. So that's why we're trying to be mindful that we're only giving what we can try to take out of the system right now. So we're, we're counting, and all these projects that are just in the pipe, many short-term projects in the pipeline right now, hopefully, we'll find some additional capacity.
Thank you.
We also want to see the plants flow in capacity, because-
The what flow?
The wastewater treatment facility in Lowell. Because if this is happening to us, we want to see the flow, you know, what's happening at the plant. Because back in two thousand eighteen, when this sort of, you know, really blossomed, we were over capacity in two thousand eighteen, a wet year, but the plant was over capacity as well. What we heard this past year, fiscal year, was that the plant, you know, season, they put in two million gallons of untreated sewage into the, into the Merrimack River, which was the concern. But again, if you put that aside, what's the flow of the plant? And so that's what we're, and we should be able to obtain that data relatively soon, in terms of flow data. Because the question really comes down to Virginia is, what is the impact of us being at capacity? But what's also the impact of the plant being at capacity? Because the concerns that we have for flow are shared by our, our, our other contributors to the system that Lowell, that is owned by the city of Lowell, Drakeett, and Tingsborough. Because, this is the Chelsea data, but Tingsborough is based into ours, but Tingsborough also has separate capacity through Drakeett. So we want to basically get a better understanding of what's going on in the other communities and what's going on through the plant. And then the big question is, is what's DEP doing as a regulatory agent and overseeing the plant operations? And so that should come into clarity within the next several weeks.
What you're saying is, even if we warn a capacity, we may be shut off because of other towns and what Lowell's doing, right?
Right, right, because that's what, that's what we want to find out. Because what the agreement says is, the, the city of Lowell has the ability to assess us for impacts of being over our capacity. That's never occurred. They've never done that. We haven't seen that, but we also want to know is, well, what is their permitted capacity, what's their operational capacity? And the problem was, is we could never get any movement on that because they were going through the negotiations on the consent order. That's now been completed by the two hundred million dollar project that, that was reported a few months ago. But now that that sort of is cleared, what, what has been conveyed to us is, because our flow goes through their pipes, we are going to be receiving double-digit assessments in our flow treatment to the plant as part of the regional agreement in the years ahead. But I think we also want to understand is, well, what is, what is going on with that plant? Because if the capacity is a constraint, Chelmsford, isn't it also the plant's capacity a constraint for all the other communities, including the city of Lowell?
Plus, they've been turned down for additional, you know, additional capacity or to expand?
Well, they have no room to expand. That's the problem, it's on an island, but we want to see what their plan is.
Yeah, they don't have a plan yet.
Right, that's, no, there is no plan for expansion by, by the city to expand their plant. But that's what we want to see, because we're seeing regularly plans for development in the city, you know, whether it's commercial and or residential. And with, I know, I for one, I'll say, you know, I use the word I, I'm wondering, well, how does, how does that occur when you've got a limited sewer capacity at the plant, aside from the, the combined sewer outflow issue?
We don't really have any other options either, do we?
No, not at the time, it doesn't, and that's, that's why we're looking, you know-
How about Berrica, we can't do-
Berrica's turned us down. They will not broach it at this time, because again, they're reserving capacity for themselves. And again, and I mentioned earlier about the MWRA sewer capacity, water capacity, that's been banted about, but there's not been any similar outreach from the MWRA regarding sewer capacity. So that's why we're exploring, is the, is the ability to connect to Bedford or, you know, or Burlington? And then the other big question is, does the town want to do that? I mean, that's, that's going to be the bigger question, is, well, what would it cost? And then the other question is, do you want to do that?
Can we afford it?
Right, afford it, but also what are the implications of that, for the, for the community itself? So it's, you know, so anyway, we're hoping to get some data in the next several weeks about what is going on with the plant, the flow. And again, what's the regulatory agency, which is the same one that's having us do the smoke testing, everything else? Well, how are they looking, how is the DEP looking at the facility? Because it's of interest to us, obviously. So that's, yeah, that's where we're at.
Any other questions? All right. I'm going to go right on to paving and sidewalk master plan. So I wanted to provide an update, I provided a similar presentation last year. I did go in more in-depth last year, because last year, we, we had just received our sidewalk master plan that was put together. So this is an update for our paving and sidewalk update. So we have our, our pavement management system that, we have a hundred eighty-seven miles of road. That is a database that we have, that we maintain annually. We look, we use that database to plan, looking out a few years, and also annually, looking at preventative maintenance or more structural rehabilitation to the roadway. We also have a whole grading of the road system, looking at all, anywhere from arterial roads to collectors and local roads. And so we use this, and this is updated by our engineering department. And also, this, we also, now that we have a sidewalk master plan, those databases do speak to each other. So we use them together to develop our system. Excellent. So when we look at pavement management, the pavement management system, we look at a rating of the roadway. So anything from a zero to a hundred, a hundred being a brand-new road, zero being a gravel road. We, right, and then we do also, so this is in our system, each road has a rating. Next slide, please. So there's different treatments recommended based on the rating of a road. Do nothing, and everything from a ninety-three to a hundred. And then you get down to routine maintenance preventative. So where you start to see the ratings of seventy-three to eighty-five, preventative maintenance. That's where you might see some crack sealing. Last year, we also implemented our pilot program for microsealing. That's more preventative maintenance. Beyond that, you get into structural rehabilitation of the roadway and at different levels. Mill and overlay, sometimes you do spot milling on a roadway, or reclaim is the more, more in-depth repair. And that's really, I think, what we focus on, on our pavement program. Explain what we did last year and what we're doing this upcoming year is, we're, it's mill and overlay, mill and over reclamation. And we are, we did a microsealing, and we do want to continue that. And so in terms of structural improvements, base rehabilitation, yes, zero to sixty, so sixty-one to seventy-two, it's mill and overlay typically, sometimes you do some leveling, and base rehab is where, that's where you, zero to sixty, you see the reclaim. Is really, that's where you have, is really the only option, or full-depth reclamation. So what we do is, we do a compilation of our roadway. We have a rating of seventy-eight point three this year. And it really is, we did a lot of paving last year, and I'll get into it. Last year, our number was seventy-six point nine, and this, this year, it's seventy-eight point three. So that is great to see that improvement, and that puts us right in about the preventative maintenance category, which is great, is that majority of our roads are in fair condition. This is, and this is a long list, I have, I'll summarize it in the next slide, but this just shows all the roads that we completed. This is really a screenshot of our database. It shows the name of the road, the segments, the treatment type, the, the area, and then the miles. So in total, this is, and this also includes the MAST DOT portions of roads. So MAST DOT did paving on Groton Road and North Road, so that's also updated in the database. So last year, we did thirteen point six miles of pavement or roadway reconstruction. One point two six million dollars of town funds were spent, that is separate from the MAST DOT funds. They, Groton Road and North Road were paid by MAST DOT. We also spent fifty-six, just under fifty-seven thousand dollars in crack sealing. Here's some examples, Pine Hill Road, that was a road that was under reclaim. Sandra Drive, so this was part of our microsealing pilot. And that, actually, we looked at it this winter, and it did hold up well, so we do want to continue that. Micro, it's essentially a driveway, what you have is a driveway seal that is applied to a roadway. And then we have an example here, Earlland Road Mill and Overlay. So we, we do have a three-year outlook on our paving plan, but we, we do publish the calendar year paving. So that, this is, will now be on our website, we actually, just, actually, recommendation to award bids tonight. We have a number of projects, we have total of nine point seven miles proposed for a total estimated construction cost of three point three million dollars. A lot of that is reclamation, so as you do a more, if, as you do, roadway reclamation is the most expensive. It was something as, whereas microsealing is the least expensive repair. A couple of projects, Drum Hill is on here, so that is happening this year, Dunstable Road. And also, and I'll get into the sidewalk plan, we do look at the sidewalk plan along with the paving plan. I just want to note too, that we, it says here, some streets are still being evaluated. So all the projects are just out to bid, as a recommendation tonight. There are a couple of streets where we had flagged for, for mill and overlay, but we just want to look at it to see if, if it can go, if it needs to go to reclaim. So there might be some minor tweaks from this list, but this is the list that was bid in our, in, is just, is mostly accurate.
Christina, how do you, how do you read this with the three street names there?
Sure, sorry, so the, the, I apologize.
So like, with the chart you were just on, Paul, the top, the top one says Maranelle Ave., Groton Road, Dunstable Road.
That would be the name of the street, and then it's from to-
From where, from where Groton Road and Dunstable Road intersect, Maranelle Ave., that's where you're doing- No, no, you don't have to apologize.
And then the next number is, is the rating, so you see sixty-two, that's the roadway rating, so we look at that. That is what we, so sometimes, a lot of times, so it's fifty-three, it's a reclaim. Also, we also identify what is chapter ninety. So this funding is chapter ninety, we also have capital, and also we have last year's allocation from the free cash as well.
Thank you.
And last is the, is the recommended treatment.
So do we not have many in, in the low numbers? I mean, it looks like the lowest number I see here is like a forty-four.
Yeah, we, I think a lot, I would say a lot of our streets are fifty, sixty, seventy, well, the average is seventy-eight. So we do still, I would say there's a good, well, looking back at past few years, we spent a lot of money on mill and overlay. We do need to focus, start to focus on the reclaim, so there's a good amount of streets that fall in the forties, fifties, sixties, and that's where we have to focus reclaim. So that's why, I think, you should maybe see a shift in the dollar amount from last year to this year, because it does cost more to do reclaim. You'll find every now and then some, you know, thirties, and various reasons why we haven't done it. But for the most part, I mean, the average is seventy-eight. I, I would say, actually, I do, and I didn't provide it, but we do have a breakdown of how many miles for each roadway rating.
Okay, and, and obviously, we're trying to get to those, just the funds, obviously, aren't there?
Or it could be various, sometimes if it's under, like, if we know there's a development happening next year, we don't want to maybe do the roadway reconstruction. So the, or if National Grid knows they have, have to get in there, then we want them to get in there before we do the road. So there's various considerations taken into effect, or even maybe looking at the sidewalk program.
Yeah, and part of it is also the, the category of the road. You've got high-volume traffic roads, like Drum Hill Road, Dunstable Road, so forth, where you've got higher volumes and higher speeds, so you've got to do those first. One is you don't want to lose them, but also, it's a safer, safety condition and an overall condition. As opposed, you, you tend to have like a little, you know, connector road, yeah, which is, which is very low volume, very low speed, could be in worse condition, but, but it falls down the ranking because of the, the, the overall big picture of it.
Yeah, one that I get, I get-
Sure.
You know, asked about frequently is Willis Drive.
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly, just doesn't have the, just doesn't have the, the volume that it's got, you know, that, because, you know, if you just targeted all your monies to those roads, then you would actually be losing spot because your, your higher roads take more abuse and wear.
Yeah, the other, the other thing to note is, there are a number of streets where the, they're not accepted, or they're unaccepted. So we're also trying to go through that, the database, to make sure that the road's accepted. Actually, Parkhurst is on her, the, Parkhurst is on here this year, and that wasn't accepted, which is hard to believe. So we're going through the process of hiring a surveyor to make sure it's accepted, so we can also do it this year. But there are a number of other streets, we get calls, and that road isn't accepted. So sometimes you see something that could be a rating of a thirty or forty, and then we look at it and we say, oh, this is not an accepted right-of-way, or not private, or a private.
I, I thought that was something we were kind of trying to focus on in the past years.
We have, yeah, and it's something we'll try to pick up in more in the future.
Yeah, because I haven't seen any in the past couple of years, now that I think about it.
Because a lot of it was just driven by, you know, addressing the road conditions.
That is something that we are looking at annually too, to look at that list, to see how we can update it. So it, for, we do look at both, how for the sidewalk program, and the focus is, we spend a lot of money on our pavement program, but also want to look at improving our sidewalks. Just last year, we did twelve hundred linear feet of replacement on Church Street. We also did sidewalk on Main Street from the town line to School Street. Wilson Street, we did, just outside here, four hundred fifteen linear feet replaced. Central Square, there was miscellaneous brick replaced in the center. Also, what we do is, so last year, when we did our, our sidewalk master plan, there's a number of curb ramps that need to be improved for ADA accessibility. So we do target at least twenty a year, and that's twenty outside of the areas we're working in. So we did target twenty last year, just to, we want to work on, on those annually. So point six miles replaced, four hundred sixty-six thousand dollars spent. This is an example of forty-four central squares, you can see before the ponding at that ramp, and we improved that ramp to address that ponding. So next year, this, this coming year, we have, I would say, more sidewalk work occurring. And I'll just go over this list here, Old Westford Road, so this is a new section of sidewalk. This is a segment that I think was identified when we look at our master plan as a segment that would be desired to better connect the sidewalk network. Also, Old Westford Road is an area where recently we had done some work, and it's on the paving plan. So a lot of this, I guess, when we have new sidewalk, we're also trying to coincide it with the paving plan. with the paving plan. Cushing Place, that was a project, that's, that street is also under, uh, on the paving list, so, and there, there had been, um, a plan to make a new brick sidewalk on that, uh, looking, I guess, looking away from the center on the right side. So that's in here. Parkhurst Street, there's all, a segment of sidewalk missing, so that Parkhurst Street is in need of repair, but also a good time to install the sidewalk, so that's a partial new sidewalk as well. And then going down the list, Longspur Road, Clydesdale Road, Windsor Street, coincides with our paving program. Parkerville Road, this is a new sidewalk that was at, was as part of our federal grant, so outside of any funding that we have previously allocated, whether through chapter ninety or the town, um, that is, we, we just found out that we've been awarded three hundred fifty thousand dollars. The project in total will be about five hundred, five hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, and we'll have money this coming fall for it, but that is thirty-five hundred linear feet of sidewalk on one side of the street, which is great, because that was, uh, much requested by the, especially adjacent to the Byham School. So that's something that, all the projects, I think for tonight, that we, that are being recommended, um, a lot of the paving projects, those are, you know, will be starting construction in the next couple of weeks. The Parkerville Road, we're actually going to have to put out for a separate project. We're, right now, we're going to move to design, and that would probably be something that would be bid later this, uh, later this, uh, summer, early fall. Essex Place and Percheron Road, this was sidewalk that was originally anticipated last year to go coincide with last, with last year's paving program, uh, because a lot of the rain, the weather, um, these just were basically pushed to this year. We also, like I said, we want to target the miscellaneous curb ramps, so we're looking at at least twenty locations, we have those, um, that is also, that is recommended through our ADA trends, or our assessment. And then twenty-six hundred linear feet that was delayed from last year, Tingsborough Road, this is a Mastioti project, they bid it last year, I think they were delayed with the rain, that's anticipated to begin this spring. So two point five million dollars proposed, one point one million estimated construction. That doesn't include, the cost isn't inclusive of Mastioti's price, or the Parkerville, or it does include Parkerville Road, um, including that three hundred fifty thousand dollar Just a quick summary of the sidewalk master plan, so we did do a whole inventory last year, forty-six and a half miles, um, of sidewalk, and also every single ramp is inventoried, so we have this master plan in our date, we use this to coincide with the pavement management plan. Um, very detailed, every curb ramp and the sidewalks, the length, the width, the material, so it's, it's great, and we do update this annually, um, through, with our engineering Uh, here, I just want to highlight, so I already mentioned the forty-six point five miles, this was based on last year's numbers, which is, we, you know, we only did point six miles, so of our entire network, we have about four miles of poor replace, twenty-five percent is, uh, a fair, we have a large percentage that are in good condition, and ten percent of the network's in excellent condition. And the seven hundred and fifty-six curb ramps, those are curb ramps owned by the town, so we still have, we, there's a significant amount remaining, um, but we do want to target at, at least twenty a year or more. Um, it will ta, it's, it will take us a while to get through them, um, but I think as long as we have a plan to pick away at it. Um, that backlog is two point million, two point two million dollars just in curb ramps. And then in total, backlog of just the existing sidewalk is twenty-two million dollars. So significant, uh, you know, needs between both of the sides, that's just for the sidewalks alone. And this is the next slide, so what we had looked at, the opportunities to better connect the network, and I just want to highlight these three segments here, so this is better connecting the network. Up on the top is Parkhurst Road, uh, to the right is, uh, Old Westford Road, and then on the bottom is the Byham School, so these will better connect the network, these are proposed sections coinciding with either the paving program, or in the Parkerville situation, having a federal grant opportunity. Um, in totality, there's fourteen point one miles of opportunity, so that's an additional thirteen million dollars above the twenty-two million dollars, so significant amount of opportunity for new sidewalk. Um, also, as we add sidewalk, we have to look at the maintenance of it. When we do install sidewalk, we want it to be at least five feet wide, because of the machines that have to get down the sidewalk.
I'm sorry, so this is where we're putting new sidewalk, or this is where you?
This is our master plan to show, this is, so this, this shows the entire town, um, anything in per, circle areas are pave, are sidewalks proposed for this year.
Okay.
As, as new sidewalks, new, new sidewalks. The purple are, are, show the connections to the existing network, and then the other colors is based on, I think, the condition of it. So I think different from last year, uh, is that we're, you know, this year is a big year, we're making connections within our network, and adjacent to schools, or near schools. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, I, uh, there was, sorry, I actually just lost my piece of paper, but there is a earmark request, uh, I know there's potentially an opportunity for, I think I left my piece of paper, but potentially an opportunity for earmark, uh, opportunity in looking in the next FY twenty-five opportunities. What we've identified is the Stony Brook, so right now, we are designing the Bridge School Street at Stony Brook Bridge, uh, rehabilitation project. Some of, going back to a two thousand seventeen report, there's been some settlement of some of the, uh, stones, this vegetation, uh, where the part, the design itself, when we have allocated capital funds, is a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're proceeding with that design, that it does involve coordination with CS, CSX, that's where we're just at, a little bit of a, a hold right now, because we do have to get onto the property to do borings. Uh, we hope to advance that design this year. The next steps, though, which is try to secure funding for that rehabilitation, and right now, it's estimated, uh, about five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. So the earmark would be the request for, to secure the construction in, in that amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
And so why this is tonight is, since our last meeting, we did receive correspondence from Congresswoman Treyhan's office, um, basically asking for projects, interest for the fiscal year twenty-five federal budget, which, you know, begins in October. So when Christine and I spoke, and knew she was coming in to bring the request tonight, we thought we'd bring this for you, and hopefully to have your approval, that we could submit the, the, this project, uh, for federal funding, much like we just received the funding for the Parkerville Road project, because it's, it's a discreet, identifiable, achievable project, um, and, um, and as we saw, she, she, you know, she announced, uh, you know, a couple of weeks ago, that she's had, she was able to secure the funding for our project as well as other towns, you, um, uh, and so again, they're now looking for projects for the upcoming year.
So do you want to vote on this one?
How much are we asking for? It's not, it, there's nothing in there.
It's a half million. So it's an increase above the funding amount we received, the three fifty this year, but we did see in the past year, you know, there were, there was, you know, the majority of the funding went to the city of Lowell, however you may have saw, they, they, they had over a million dollars of funding for the Town of Barica Center Improvement Project, which of course, didn't get fund, got, you know, didn't, didn't advance through the whole community, uh, and there were other projects in other towns, so when we looked at it and said, well, what, given that we were sort of, you know, guided, um, in our request last year to around three fifty or so, we thought we would just take a leap to five hundred to see if we could get it for this, for this bridge project. We also think that the federal government would be inclined to fund a bridge project, given that they're concerned in terms of conditions of infrastructure. Um, so that's why we, we, we suggested that this may be a very tangible, clearly understood, um, also community beneficial, because if, if the federal government doesn't fund it, we're going to have to fund it next year's capital, uh, because this project has, has to take place.
I think also, the grant, uh, requests indicated projects that are near-ready, so we're advancing the design, so it does make it a more attractive project with it being near-ready.
What was the, um, what's the sidewalk hole that keeps getting brought up at town meeting? Is that getting addressed in the sidewalk plan? I know one was the Parkerville where we got funding.
The, the other sidewalk concern, and, and DPW is, is struggling with this, is the one on, on Turnpike Road, is how do, how do you get that gap from?
There was one near a school, Center School, or?
South, no, it's south.
Turnpike would be near the Center School. So we have five hundred thousand dollars, we do have five hundred thousand dollars in funding, I didn't put it in this year's sidewalk plan, because we do have a permitting obstacle to get over, um, but we have until December of next year to, to use the funds, so hopeful that it would have, be a project for next year, we're just trying to find.
The concern, the wetlands replicate, yeah.
Right, so we need to come up with five thousand cubic yards of compensatory storage, uh, we're having difficulty locating that, well, finding that location. Essentially, there's one point where we need a bridge, and that, that is, uh, in, in order to do that, we need to find compensatory storage.
So if you go, if you go past the credit union, you're heading down.
That's the repeated concern that keeps coming up in town meetings, so we have the funding, we have to just get, we have to get through some wickets to use it.
It's, 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 and we, and Christine and her staff have, have sought assistance from National Grid on wetlands replication, thus far, it's not, not happening. Um, so if you, just visualize, if, if you, if you are out sometime in the community, you go past the credit union, heading, you know, down, you know, towards Mill Road, that direction, you know, so away from Golden Cove, you know, that way, on the left-hand side, you can see how wet it is there. And the problem is, is, you know, you, you need to have sufficient road width for, you know, sidewalk, travel lanes and so forth, well, there's wetlands there, there's no dry land, and you can't go to the other side because of the houses that are there. And so that's the issue, is, is it may, you know, we've, we're trying to find a wetland replication area, uh, that, you know, we, we approach National Grid, and we're trying to find a solution, because the idea of building some kind of a bridge is ridiculously expensive.
Did they put a big bridge in there down that?
There's a big culvert there, there's a big culvert there, but not a bridge, and so that's been the concern, and, you know, because we've been talking about doing Turnpike Road for a half dozen years, uh, and we, we, you know, time when they were building Kinlock, I mean, if you go back to that permitting thing, and that's been the obstacle, is, is that wetland area, uh, as you come, again.
On that side.
On that side.
The other side is not.
Because you can see it, no, because if you can see, if you, if you start at Kinlock, it's not coming by, and you, you've got those industrial buildings, you've got dry land and sidewalk area and right-of-way, the problem is, is you then keep now coming from this way and approaching towards the credit union, there's nothing there but wetlands.
The other side of the street isn't an option, just because the houses are too close?
It's not why, yeah, there isn't enough right-of-way, uh, because otherwise, we'd have done it by now.
I was just asking, in the context of this, if that was another consideration, but we have the funding.
Yeah, it, it's just, it's just the permitting issue, and it's, it's not for lack of trying.
Yeah, when we thought of Car, there were other projects that we honestly thought of, um, we have, we have a lot of needs, um, Carlisle Street being one of them, is this then, if we got the funding and then having to do it in the next year or two, and then if the bridge, uh, bridge project is underway, it might be difficult to do that project. So this does seem like a great opportunity, because we're in the, we're, this year, we'll complete the design.
Want a motion? I'll make a motion to, um, approve the town manager's request for a fiscal year twenty-five federal earmark request for the School Street at Stony Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
Second motion.
Give a motion, second, all in favor?
Okay.
Paul, since we're talking about School Street, um, it reminded me about that train building.
Yeah, there, there is an update, um, I did receive an update, and Too Bad Deb's has left the meeting.
Yeah, Too Bad Deb left, yeah.
But they did get the permit, and I think in the next several weeks, you'll see that coming down and being relocated, finally.
Oh, okay.
Wonderful.
For the, the old freight house, yes, believe it or not, it, it, yeah, as, as Christine noted in one of her earlier comments, it's very difficult to work with the railroad, uh, and that proved to be the case, why it's taken so long in this case as well.
They don't own it anymore either.
Right, right.
At least it didn't fall down.
Right, yeah, no, it didn't fall down, but it's going to be disassembled and then reassembled.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next up is, um, our proposed municipal property lighting policy. Uh, so Paul, if you want to give a recap of what you provided?
Certainly, so at the, the last meeting of the board, you had asked me to review the zoning bylaws and determine if there was any exceptions applicable to municipally-owned property. Um, so there's no general exception for zoning on municipally-owned, um, municipally-owned properties, um, so I reviewed the bylaw and took a look at the, the exceptions, and there are, there are some exceptions in there, but none of them that would be applicable in this instance. Um, so what that ultimately means is that town-owned property is subject to the bylaw, which includes in section one ninety, uh, one ninety-five dash thirty-four, C subsection eight, no flashing, moving color, open parentheses, white only, closed parentheses, or revolving lights shall be maintained. So now, there may be opportunities for situations where there's, um, lighting that predates the adoption of this zoning bylaw, there could be pre-existing non-conforming status, but leaving that out, the only other way in which the town could have, um, colored lights approved on municipal properties, um, is in section one ninety-five dash thirty-four, subsection B, there's a provision that states the requirements of this section may be reduced by special permit issued by the planning board upon a finding that such reduction will not detract from the objectives of this section. So theoretically, the town could request the planning board to grant a special permit to reduce the requirements basically to zero when it comes to the use of colored lights.
Okay. Is there any, uh, interest in doing that? Any appetite to?
I have no appetite.
No? George, how about you?
Oh, I think I go home.
You look like you're all ready to do that.
We have bigger fish to fry.
Still trying to swallow it, but, uh.
All right, well, I guess that, I mean, we, we probably do need to come up with a policy similar to our flag policy, just to reiterate, I would say, I mean, unless we.
Well, at least when it comes to terms with lighting.
By the bylaw?
Just say according to town bylaws, yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Do we need to?
Do we need a policy power, or do we just say?
In this instance, I don't think there is a need for.
We would just tell people, we can't do colored lighting, but, but what you, what you will see is, is you will see the white lighting that, for the monument, for the monument in the center, but, because that's why, yeah, just want you to know, that work's going to be done in the next several weeks by DPW, the permanent install, but, but no, there'll be no colored, that's what we'll tell people, so.
Okay.
All right, that solves that, huh? Oh, that was an easy one, then.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that.
So on to the regulatory agreements.
Yeah, uh, real, real quickly, um, you've, you've sort of saw this at a previous meeting, and now I'm sort of bringing them both in. We have now before you the regulatory agreements and, and the, um, local initiative program applications for the local action units for all the units at two fifty-five Princeton Street. So that, that, that basically includes the six, the six units for the, um, Tremel Crow Development, uh, as, as well as the fifty-six, fifty-four units for the, um, the Choice Development on there. So, um, what I'm seeking this evening would be for the board to approve the submittal of, of the, approve the regulatory agreements in, in, uh, local initiative applications, uh, and then authorize me to submit them on behalf of the town to, to the state, um, so they can be part of our, the town's subsidized housing inventory.
So.
Fifty-four, excuse me.
Fifty-four, fifty-four plus six, so it's fifty-four at the Choice Development, and then the six at the Tremel Co, Tremel Crow Development. So again, we're bringing them both here, I know you saw one of these before.
It's right over a ten percent right now, then, right?
That would get us over the ten percent, but as council notes, that only will get us to ten percent till October, when, when the Choice units were, were, were approved. Um, so that'll carry us October of twenty-four, so basically, six, six months or so from now.
So on, on the first page of the first agreement that we have here, the one that we saw last time, this, um, the second from the bottom paragraph, it says a total of fifty-four, should that say sixty?
Yeah.
No, because it's two separate agreements, the, the fifty-four is on the two point oh eight acres, and then the other agreement is six units on the thirty-one point nine two acres. So if you, that's what I'm saying, if you put the two agreements side by side, there's, there's, you know.
Where is that? Where's the six in here?
Right, I don't see the six.
You have, you should, you have two agreements, you have two, two agreements in there, um, so the, the large unit, which is the Tremel Crow, was thirty-one point nine two acres, which is six units, the two point oh eight acres is the fifty-four units, which is the Choice Development, so you, you should have in your packets the, the two regulatory agreements, and then the two applications, that's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to bring them all together, so you'd see the whole puzzle.
Okay, and I have another question, too. Is, is a local action different than a local initiative program? Because this, I mean, it, is this different than the lift that we're going to be looking at next month?
Yes.
Well, it is. So the local initiative program, there's two different aspects to it. One of it actually acts as a 40B subsidy program, similar to the process that you saw tonight, where an applicant goes to a subsidy program, gets a project eligibility letter, comes in front of the Board of Appeals, and pursues a comprehensive permit project. But there's also a different aspect of LIP where if the town has a local bylaw that allows creation of affordable housing through that bylaw through a special permit process, that can be considered to be a LIP, and then you submit a local action unit application along with that LIP so that you can add those units to your subsidized housing inventory. So it's, it's sort of two different aspects of a same program. One is actually part of the 40B process, and one of them is outside of the 40B process that allows towns to count units that they have approved through local action.
Okay, so otherwise, we would not be able to count these?
Correct.
Correct.
So until, until Executive Office of Housing and Livable Community signs off on the local action unit application, these units will not be able to be counted on the town's subsidized housing inventory.
Okay.
It's a matter of timing, in other words, right?
Yes, certainly. Timing is a factor. One thing I will note, I'm not sure whether or not EOHLC has reviewed and approved these regulatory agreements yet. I mean, it's a form document, so it's really just fill in the blanks. I don't know what objections they may raise, but the potential is there that they may send this back to us and say, we've made X, Y, and Z changes, you need to re-execute this. However, I definitely recommend sending it to them executed now, because the quicker we can get through this process, the quicker we can get these units added on to our SHI.
So in the the first document is this 255 Princeton RA. The second document is this 255 Princeton Street Alexon LAU APP. And in that one...
That's the local action unit.
Okay, but let me just keep going here. So in that one, there's a section called Community Support Narrative Project Description and Documentation, and there is a narrative that starts with Alexon Chelmsford will consist of 340 units. The fourth document is the Choice LAU Application, but there's no, that section is totally blank where it says provide a description of narrative. There's stuff at the bottom of the document after the signature pages, so is that what, is that what we're signing off on? So like if we just, the first, the first one that we approved last time, that's the regulatory agreement for Tremel Crow?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then the second one in the packet, you said that's the LAU application?
Right.
For Tremel Crow?
Right, right. Each one, you have a regulatory agreement, you have your local action unit application.
Okay, so the third one in the packet is the regulatory agreement, is that for Choice?
That's for Choice, yes.
Okay, and then what I'm looking at is the fourth one, which is the LAU application for Choice, but that whole section that says provide a description is blank, and then it goes to signatures, and then after the signatures, there's some content. So I'm just trying to figure out what the document's supposed to... Are we signing off on the content that's after the signatures? I'm looking at page two on that document where it says Community Support Narrative. It's blank.
And what should be there is a description of the process approving the choice units.
Right.
So, so that's blank, and then there's the signature fields after that, and then starting on page four, after the signature fields, is, there's content about the developer and the project and the unit composition. So is that document okay, or is it?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Do you find it?
Yeah. So what you're saying is, here on the Alexon.
Right, so you've got this in here.
And the one for David's project is blank, but then you have the accompanying pages of the project description.
Right, so this should just be added to the choice one, just the blurb explaining that process. And I think the board can vote to sign it still, you know, with the condition that that be added to it.
You okay for a motion?
Sure.
We don't have to do each one individually, do we?
I don't think so. We can do them all, yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the four regulatory agreements for subsidized housing units at 255 Princeton Street with the Choice LAU application modified to include the required narrative description of the project.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You need me for anything else?
I think that should do it. Thanks.
Have a good night.
All right. We'll look at our proposed meeting schedule for the month of April.
Yeah, hopefully it's pretty straightforward. A week from tomorrow is the town election. The board traditionally would reorganize two days later on Thursday evening, April 4th this year. Fortunately, we have five Mondays in April this year, so the thought would be the board would meet Monday, the 8th, which is two weeks from tonight. The following Monday is the Patriots' Day holiday, then the following Monday, the 22nd, the board would meet, and then we would be at town meeting the following Monday, the 29th.
I'm sure we'll, we'll use those meetings very...
So they, yeah, and actually, it gives the board two meetings, of which two, we'll, we'll do the presentation on the Warren Articles, the first meeting in April, but it will give you that additional time if you need it on the 22nd for your...
Well, we also are beginning that public hearing on the 22nd.
Yeah, we also have the public, the local initiative on the 8th as well, yeah.
So we'll have some busy meetings.
Yep.
There's also, reorg is at 6:00 too also, right?
Correct, yeah. All right, anybody have any issue with those dates? All right. We have an appointment. Somebody who has applied for the vacancy under Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. I do not know this person, but looks very qualified from his background. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the Select Board to appoint Nicholas Mercier to the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
Give a motion and a second, all in favor? Hopefully, we'll see his name again in a few months. Okay, bid awards.
Yeah, just the DPW bid awards this evening, as, as DPW Director Christine Clancy noted earlier, the DPW conducted bid openings for Mill and Overlay and for full-depth reclaim and paving and hot mix asphalt obtained at the plant. For the paving for Mill and Overlay, there were four bids submitted. The low bid was by, was submitted by Newport at $1,775,500. For the paving full-depth reclamation, there were five bids submitted, and you can see the low bid was submitted by Newport at a price of $1,527,250. And then for the hot asphalt mix at Plant, there was, there was just one bid. The bid price is $39,220 from Holcomb, which is the former aggregate off of Oak Street. So again, I'd seek your confirmation for those three bid awards.
Any questions?
I just trying to read the letter. I'll make a rec, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the award of the Mill and Overlay in the amount of $1,775,500. The full-depth reclaim and paving in the amount of $1,527,250 to Newport Construction Court. And a motion to award the hot mix asphalt plant in the amount of $39,220 to Holcomb NER Inc. Period.
I'll second the motion.
Period. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? It's getting late.
Thank you. And then the next one is for the, for the high school kitchen remodeling and upgrade. There were two bids submitted for that, and we're recommending the bid to the lowest qualified bidder, which was the low bidder, in the, in the amount of $1,570,664 to Picard Construction Corporation.
I'll make a motion to approve the kitchen model and upgrade award at the Chelmsford High School in the amount of $1,570,664 to Picard Construction Corporation.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
And then lastly, the bid award for the kitchen equipment purchase for the high school kitchen renovation. And as you can see, there, there were, there were seven people who obtained the bid specifications. Three of them submitted bids, and the bid award is submitted to the lowest bid, which was the lowest qualified bid of Singer Kittredge in the amount of $333,904.
I'll make a motion to approve award of the contract for the kitchen equipment purchase at Chelmsford High School in the amount of $333,904 to Singer Kittredge.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you.
Right, thank you.
All right. Now we have reports.
Yeah, I'll go real quickly. I recognize we're, we've been here for a third hour. Double poll report. The way we left it with National Grid, you left it with National Grid was you asked them to come back quarterly, but to provide monthly reports. What I have for you is the March double poll report dated March 20th. Basically, where it stands, and at this point, we have 66 double polls, and in terms of the balls and whose court, in other words, who's next to act, there were 13 by the town and two by the fire department. And just to give a reference point, back in February, the previous report, there were 64 double polls. The two double polls have been added. However, the town of Chelmsford has removed seven, a net of seven out of its court. So a year, month ago, we were 20, we're in our court to get the movement done and the work. So DPW has contracted, because the weather cooperated, to remove, you know, to basically get a net of seven of those double polls addressed. So now that the weather is getting better, we'll, we'll hope to see more progress on this. So that's where things stand on the double polls at this point in time. So and, and I think even today, they were doing some, some work down here on Bobricka Road, almost near Turnpike and Golden Cove, so there was someone working on a double poll there. So just wanted to let you know that we, we are following up as directed by the board in terms of requesting monthly reports, and then we'll have them come in next quarter.
Yeah, I was a little, like, I guess I expected to see the, you know, the, the little box that would show how many were removed and how many were added. So, I mean, I know.
I can ask National Grid to do that.
They've done that in the past.
Right, exactly, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you can, you could guess. I mean, you look at the ones that were this year and added this year, although it says there was one that was added 11-8, 2024. I don't know how that happened.
Okay, I'll ask that next time.
Okay, thank you.
Submit the report, thank you. Real update on Coolest Farm, and again, it's, it's up to the moment as of including work today, but the Coolest Farm Task Force met last Wednesday. This was a follow-up from the two weeks prior where they received the expressions of interest, proposals for the property. And basically, there wasn't a full component of the board there, but there was a quorum, and it was really a consensus, because members who weren't there sort of submitted their opinions in writing. Long story short, and you probably have seen some of this on social media, but the task force does support the creation of native pollinator meadow on the main 25.2 acre parcel. They also support the location of a wildlife refuge clinic on the main 25.2 acre parcel. They support hay cultivation on the six-and-a-half acre parcel that's located across the street from the main parcel on Pine Hill Road. And then for the 6.6 acre, 6.66 acre parcel located off of Hunt Road, they, they support agricultural use of that property. That was the only use that came forward and seemed to be viable because of the wetlands at that location. What the task force did agree to do is they're going to further explore whether an agricultural use by Western Nurseries can be accommodated on the main 25.2 acre parcel. What, what I informed the committee of and would point out to the board and the community is, the proposed uses for a wildlife clinic and by Western Nurseries, or any proposed use that would require a lease from the town of more than five years, requires town meeting approval. Our town meeting bylaws basically require town meeting approval for any lease period of any municipal property for more than five years requires town meeting approval. Also, I pointed out to the task force and noted here is that you also have procurement issues as well, in that we, we just can't say, oh, well, give us a, give us a X period number lease, because we, you know, we want to lease it to X. What you, the town has to do a, a...
They have to put the billing up.
Yeah. No, you'd have to get the approval to do it, and then, you know, and, and, you know.
Get proof of funds, proof of finance.
Yeah, you have to do a procurement process unless you got to go through some special act of the legislature, you know, to direct it. But basically, if, so for example, if Western Nurseries wants to use it for, for their commercial operations on, you know, down the street, you know, that they have on, on Pine Hill Road, well, you would have to get town meeting approval to, well, first thing you got to do is you got to get the preservation restriction on place in the property. Then you have to get the town meeting approval to lease it for more than five years. Then you have to put it out to a competitive bid process for, for the proposed use of the property. So, and the, and noting that, the preservation restriction on the property is, is very similar to what we've been hearing updates from, from the Conservation Commission regarding the Warren Pole property. The town has to draft a preservation restriction that's approved by a qualified third-party nonprofit organization that would enforce the preservation restriction that, to date in Chelmsford, has been by the Land Trust. And then you also have to submit that document to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And again, that would all have to occur before you do any of this type of work, because you got to make sure that it's allowed and approved to do that. And as we've seen, that, that does take some time, because it's not just drafting a RFP or a document. You have to go into the baseline survey, have a party go out and do that, and, and develop that full plan, and then also identify the uses and, and what's allowed and so forth. And again, we've, we know that this takes time. So where the task force is at this point, they're going to conduct another site visit, which hasn't been scheduled at this point in time, to clearly understand and identify their recommended locations for the various uses on the parcels, particularly the main parcel, which has multiple uses from, you know, wildlife refuges, meadows, handicapped accessible trails, parking, and so forth. And then I, then I expect that the task force will then come present to, to you, the Select Board, their, their findings and recommendations. What did happen again as recently as this morning is the demolition of the residential structure was, was initiated and completed, and now the site has been filled by the DPW to create a, you know, a safe, even level surface on the site. The next item, and essentially now near the end of the DPW's responsibilities and ask at that site, because they are, as Christine noted, are probably works, they're now pivoting to road construction and other, as the season opens up. They're going to put gravel down to create a temporary 15-space parking area in the disturbed area near the front of the property. They also, and I was out there this morning with Christine and Joe Erickson, our highway superintendent, in addition to laying the gravel and creating that designated parking area, they're also going to secure the property from anybody who would wander out of the parking area to the rear of the property. In other words, you're going to see some big stones there, so that somebody doesn't leave the parking area and cause damage on the property. Because if, if you look at it now, it's pretty wide open. So that, that will occur in, in the next couple of weeks. And then the only other final thing is, the task force, and I support the notion of, there is some, we, we do have time to get some initial agricultural uses out there this season. is some, we do have time to get some initial agricultural uses out there this season, namely, while all this other stuff is taking place. So namely, we can take the parcel that's the six and a half acre across the street, which has traditionally been hayed. I, you know, we can issue a license, meaning for this growing season. And then similarly, for the one off of Hunt Road, give a license for the growing season so that area can at least be improved and developed.
Like just hayed?
Yeah. Well, hay would be, hay would be done on the six and a half acre parcel off of Pine Hill Road. I think you're hearing pumpkins or gourds, that kind of thing, off of Hunt Road. But they want to get in there and do that work because if you're gonna get seeds in the ground, you really want to do that by June 1st. So if the board has no objections, I would, I will issue one-day licenses.
One year?
One-year licenses to the parties who've expressed interest. Again, it binds the town to nothing. They're revocable at will. It's very similar to the license, it's the license agreements that we have at Sunny Meadow and so forth that we do annually with the farmering activities over there. So we would have a nominal payment, you know, for that use of the land, and then they would go out there and basically turn the soil is what they're really gonna do, turn the soil and improve it.
They wouldn't be putting up fences and things like that?
No. No. Because we can't. We don't have all the process and approvals in place to do that, to put structures in work.
So they can't put up fences and they can just...
But it basically does is it allows some activity to take place as opposed to another year, but just overgrowing and growing foul. Because if you ride by on Pine Hill, you can see that it's not been addressed in several years, and that's when you start getting the growth and the thickets. And particularly off of Hunt Road, you've got a few years of growth there that they're gonna have to go in and basically cut that. And so again, it just, it just starts a process without obligating the town to anything in the future. But otherwise, it's gonna sit vacant for another year.
The pumpkins and gourds was for the organization that donates most of their food.
Yes.
And that's, so that's similar to what we did at Watten Farm for them.
Exactly.
And then the hay cultivation, is that basically for profit?
Yes. Yeah. Very similar to what we do at Sheehan Farm down the street.
Oh, we do that? We have a precedent for that already? Do we, do we charge them for that?
Yeah. It's not a huge amount of funds.
The other one, we charge like a dollar, right?
Right. No, it's...
At Watten, not, not Sheehan, at Watten Farm, for the one that does it for, to help feed the hungry.
Right. Exactly. Yep. But where it's a for-profit, the for-profit farmers at Sunny Meadow Farm and at Sheehan Farm, they pay, they pay a cash payment to the town at the end of the growing season. That's how we schedule the payment. That way, they get the revenue from their activities, and then they make a payment to the town.
Is there consideration? I thought, I heard somebody mention, like, whether the wildlife would be on the main parcel or one of the smaller ones. Are they considering that?
It's considering that. No, it is considering that.
Is that part of the site walk?
Yeah. It's part of the site walk. I mean, there was a question about, could you put the wildlife, you know, clinic over, off of Hunt Road? Would it fit there? The problem is, is what we don't have, the wetlands have...
25 acres is huge.
Right. The wet, oh, yeah. It wouldn't be the whole thing. It would just be a portion.
She gets, yes.
The wetlands have been flagged, but they haven't been mapped. And so that's gonna take some time. In other words, because of the weather conditions, they were able, the wetland scientist was able to go out there and identify the wetlands. That now, fieldwork has to be converted to a survey map that we, and then once you have that work, then you know your buffer zones, because you've got the 25-foot non-disturbed within a wetland, and then the 50-foot buffer zone. And then that can determine, Virginia, whether or not you could actually fit the wildlife clinic off of Hunt Road.
Is there sewer on either of the smaller parcels?
There is sewer at the, there was, there was, there's sewer lines going past them, which you can make a connection, yes. There was a sewer, obviously, at the residential dwelling, which is capped.
Right.
So that could be uncapped. And, you know, you could make, yes.
You could.
Yeah. You could make it, make it. And so we're looking at that. We're, again, it's part of the effort. I mean, new houses ask town and others to look for potential locations. So we are looking at Coolest. I'm also exploring other possible locations where they may be able to, you know, to locate in the community. So that's the Coolest update. And then real, real quickly, where we are with the North Fire Station. It's good news. The vendor, which is Triumph Modular, who is the vendor for the modular project up there, has agreed to replace the facade up at the North Fire Station. What was agreed by Triumph and by the building committee, recommendation is not to replace it with the same product. So that we're looking right now, putting on an alternative exterior siding. The building committee's going to meet in two weeks from tomorrow.
Design, you mean, not the same look?
Yeah. It's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be brick. It's gonna, it's gonna probably be some, you know, but it wants to fit with the industrial characteristic of the neighborhood.
Yeah. That, because it was...
Right. So that's, that's, that's what's gonna happen. That we've, again, the building committee's gonna meet in two weeks, and we'll probably be back here next month with the, with the update and the plan, saying this is how we want to proceed. The good news is this work should be done by the 4th of July or so. I mean, it should be done by June. So that's good news in terms of finally getting a resolution to the, you know, the facade and the failure of that product. And then lastly, I just wanted to inform the board that we have, since our last meeting, received additional settlement payments from the national opioid litigation settlements. And the town received over $130,000, you know, from the settlements under the payment schedules. Again, that, under the new state law, that goes into a restricted account and is used only for the specified purposes that are allowed under the opioid settlement, which are basically community mental health and substance abuse programs.
Can any, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You sure? Can any of that be used to, so we've funded, like, additional health department position with ARPA fund. Can any of that be used to apply toward that position?
Yes. And it also funds that, it also funds that program that you see promoted all the time about the resource for all the residents in the Community Care Solace Program. That funding goes to that as well. So it does provide a community benefit that otherwise we wouldn't have or we'd be funding through the tax.
Is there, is there a deadline by which you have to expend the funds?
No. But you have to report annually to the Attorney General's office.
But that would provide some operating budget relief to extend that position that's under ARPA right now?
Yes. So, but we do have reported requirements that every fiscal year, the town accountant has to certify the monies that were received and then how the monies were expended as part of the settlement agreement. So that, that's how that will happen.
Yeah. So my question is gonna be what we have been spending it on?
Yes.
And that's what we have.
Yeah. That's the Care Solace Program has been the one, the big one, which, again, provides support services for anybody in the community, you know, and it's been very popular. They provide monthly reports to the health department and copy me on the utilization of that program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
All right. We're on to minutes. I think we're almost done.
You did a bad job tonight, Pat.
A bad job?
It's all your fault.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions, concerns about either set of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the select board minutes of September 29th, 2023, and March 11th, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Assuming that's an aye there. Okay. So we're on to liaison reports and referrals. George, anything tonight?
I do.
Couple of quick ones. The Conservation Commission is expecting to formalize their appointments for the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee at its meeting tomorrow. And then they'll do a kickoff in, like, mid-April. And then the Finance Committee is meeting this Thursday, and their current plan is to complete all the financial reviews and then to do their votes on the Warren Articles and get that done.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick things. Everybody remember to vote on August 2nd, I mean, April 2nd. And on our next regular meeting, which is April 8th, we'll have a full board for the first time in months. And George, are you sure there's not something that you want to talk about? Mr. Cato, maybe?
Tommy Cato is a great guy. He's being buried a week from, the mass is a week from today, right?
A week from today.
Seven o'clock at St. Mary's.
Yep.
I don't know if it's a life, you know, if it's a real funeral. I'm not sure if it's a...
I think it's a real funeral mass, but there's no calling hours. There's no service.
A celebration of life.
Yeah. Celebration of life. I'm not sure because he was a good guy, you know. Of course, my, I was tied up a little bit this weekend with my cousins. He passed and whatever. It was, you know, it's never easy, no matter how old they are, how long, you know what I mean? It's just, Tommy Cato was very, very well-respected by anybody that ever knew him. He was a great friend of my dad's, and then he became a great friend of mine. And so many other people. And nobody ever said a bad word about him, you know? So, God bless him.
All right. One more motion.
It's 9:19, and I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'll go, I guess.
There we go. All right. Thank you.